Planning Board Meeting, Thursday, June 16, 2022. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 7, 2022, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Trittown News. Second, on January 7, 2022, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on January 7, 2022, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. Members of the public will have a chance to ask questions and comment on applications once the chairman opens the hearing up to members of the public. If you wish to ask questions or comment on an application, you will need to use the Raise Your Hand feature and we'll bring you into the meeting one at a time. You will need to have audio and video capability. You will be sworn in and you will need to provide your name and address. For anyone calling in, you can press *9 to raise or lower your hand and *6 to mute or unmute yourself. This meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai?
Here.
Mr. Cristiano?
Here.
Mr. Durado?
Here.
Mr. Greenfield?
Here.
Mr. Husser?
Here.
Mr. Nacastro, I have not heard from and I don't see him in the audience. Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Councilman Bonavich, I have not seen or talked to him either. Mr. Spanville?
Here.
Ms. Talente?
Here.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Can everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence for all of our first responders and those both serving here and abroad. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have approval of minutes. We have approval of regular minutes, April 28, 2022. Eligible voters, Mr. Cristiano, Mr. Durado, Mr. Greenfield, Mr. Husser, Mr. Seaman, Mr. Spanville, and Ms. Talente. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Durado?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Spanville?
Yes.
And Ms. Talente?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, we have approval of minutes for special meeting, May 5, 2022. Eligible voters, Mr. Cristiano, Mr. Greenfield, Mr. Seaman, Mr. Spanville, Ms. Talente, and myself. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Thank you. Vote.
We have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Spanville?
Yes.
Ms. Talente?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, we have regular meeting of May 12, 2022. Eligible voters, Mr. Bavai, Mr. Durado, Mr. Greenfield, and Ms. Talente. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Durado?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
And Ms. Talente?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. We have regular meeting minutes to approve of June 2, 2022. Eligible voters, Mr. Bavai, Mr. Cristiano, Mr. Greenfield, Mr. Spanville, Ms. Talente, and myself. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
I'm not sure who was first and who was second.
Mr. Cristiano was first and Mr. Bavai is second.
Thank you. Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Spanville?
Yes.
Ms. Talente?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Hey, any vouchers?
I have no vouchers this evening.
Thank you. Correspondence?
Correspondence? I had a letter from the Attorney for Monmouth Commerce, which was on tonight's agenda. They submitted revised plans 10 days prior and they wanted to be able to give the board professionals time to review them. So they've asked that this be rescheduled to the next available regularly scheduled Planning Board meeting on August 4th to provide them sufficient time. And he agreed to extend the deadline for the board to August the 5th. So they haven't noticed for it, so they will notice.
With vacations, we confirmed we have a full board for the 4th.
I haven't heard from anybody yet, so.
Okay, so everybody on this, I know I'll be around on my vacation, I believe, the following week. Probably missed the third, the second meeting of the month. But if anybody, does anybody know what their vacation schedule is? And will they automatically not be there or do they still need some time to work that out with the family? I'll be here.
If you do know, just email me and this way I can keep track on the agenda schedule so I'll know if we're gonna have a quorum or not. Okay?
All right.
And then the only other thing is I sent some ordinances out to the board yesterday. They need to be commented on today because our next meeting is after the council's next meeting when they plan to have a public hearing and adoption on those ordinances.
I will not be able to comment on those. I did not have an opportunity to look at and review them, Eileen.
Yeah, I would agree, Mr. Chair. I did not have an opportunity to review those either.
Ron?
So just checking, do we have a quorum that would be voting?
Yeah, we have nine members tonight.
Okay, so we can still, we can still move forward. For the rest of the board members or the other board members that would be abstaining or any board members that have any questions, again, we're reviewing the ordinances for determination as to substantial consistency with the master plan.
Okay, seeing everybody is saying that they're, are not saying anything, I will take that as they're eligible and feel confident they can vote on those ordinances. With that being said, I have to be honest with you, Ron, my agenda here is a little messed up.
We want to...
What should be the formal procedure?
Well, the procedure would be that we'd go one by one and then someone would make a motion that it either is or is not substantially consistent. So Eileen, maybe if you can just read out the first ordinance that we have?
Give me one second. Because I believe last week or last meeting, we did them all at once, but whatever you feel like doing. Okay, ordinance number O2233 is an ordinance of the Township of Howell supplementing Chapter 188, Article 10, Zones, supplementing Section 18878 entitled Highway Development 2, or HD2, to include in automobile auctions, automobile sales, new and used, automobile service stations, and automobile repair, auto body uses as conditional uses.
And then I would just ask Jen if you could just comment on that briefly?
So this is the implementation of a direct recommendation from the Langus Plan Amendment that was adopted on May 5th.
So your recommendation is...
Substantially consistent, yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, if we can have a motion that it's substantially consistent?
Thank you. Entertained a motion that's substantially consistent with the master plan?
I'll make that motion, Chairman.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Durado? Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Epstein.
Epstein. Mr. Spanville?
Yes.
Ms. Talente?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Epstein.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The next ordinance, Eileen?
The next ordinance is O2234. It's an ordinance of the Township of Howell supplementing Chapter 188, Article 10, Zones, adding new Section 188-86.5 entitled Military Zone and rezoning certain parcels from ARE 6 to Military.
So, Mr. Chair, I would again reiterate, this is implementation of a direct recommendation from the Langus Amendment that was adopted on May 5th.
So I would then say, in my professional opinion, is substantially consistent.
Okay, do, does anybody have any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion that is substantially consistent with the master plan.
Real quick, Mr. Chair, Ms. Beam, if I'm correct, this is the same piece that was attached to Earl that we talked about before? Is that correct?
So it's not, it's, yes, it's the area immediately surrounding Earl that we talked about when we had the master plan hearing, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion, please.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Durado?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Spanville?
Yes.
Ms. Talente?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse? Okay, the next ordinance is O2235. It's an ordinance of the Township of Howell changing the zoning of certain properties within the Township of Howell to zoning designation Agriculture Rural Estate 1.
So again, Mr. Chair, I would submit, this is the direct implementation of a recommendation from the Langus Amendment that was adopted on May 5th. And as such, I would recommend a finding of substantially consistent.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion that is substantially consistent with the master plan.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Sorry, Mr. Bavai.
That's all right.
A roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Durado?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Spanville?
Yes.
Ms. Talente?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Epstein.
Motion carries. The next ordinance is Ordinance O2236. It is an ordinance of the Township of Howell changing the zoning of certain properties within the Township of Howell, zoning designation Recreational Residential Community, or RRC, and they originally were HD3 parcels.
So again, this is a direct implementation of a recommendation out of the Langus Amendment adopted May 5th. As such, I would recommend a finding of substantially consistent.
Thank you. Anybody has any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion that a ordinance is substantially consistent with the master plan. Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Durado?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Spanville?
Yes.
Ms. Talente?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Okay.
Thank you. Ordinance O2237 is an ordinance of the Township of Howell changing the zoning of certain properties within the Township of Howell from SED to R50 Zone, Residential 50.
Ms. Beam?
Again, it's the same mantra. This is the direct implementation of the Langus Amendment that was adopted on May 5th and as such, I would recommend a finding of substantially consistent.
Thank you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion that is substantially consistent with the master plan. No one has questions?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Durado?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Spanville?
Yes.
Ms. Talente?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Epstein.
Thank you. The next ordinance is O2238, which is an ordinance of the Township of Howell changing the zoning of certain properties within the Township of Howell to zoning designation Highway Development 3, and that was a parcel that was originally in the SED Zone.
So again, this is the direct implementation of a recommendation from the Langus Amendment adopted on May 5th. As such, I would recommend a finding of substantially consistent.
Thank you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion that is substantially consistent with the master plan, please.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Durado. I'm sorry, Mr. Bavai. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Durado?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Spanville?
Yes.
Ms. Talente?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Thank you.
Okay, the next ordinance is O2239. It's an ordinance of the Township of Howell changing the zoning of certain properties within the Township of Howell from ARE 3 to R3, or Residential 3.
You?
This is direct implementation of a recommendation from the Langus Amendment adopted on May 5th. As such, I would recommend a finding of substantially consistent.
Thank you. Okay. I'll entertain a motion that the ordinance is substantially consistent with the master plan, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Durado?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Spanville?
Yes.
Ms. Talente?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Thank you.
Ordinance number O2240 is an ordinance of the Township of Howell changing the zoning of certain properties within the Township of Howell from ARE 3, or to Neighborhood Commercial, or NC Zone.
You?
Another direct implementation of a recommendation out of the Langus Amendment adopted May 5th. As such, I would recommend a finding of substantially consistent.
Thank you, Ms. Beam. Okay, entertain a motion that's substantially consistent, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Beam. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Durado?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield? I keep losing you, Mr. Greenfield.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Epstein. Yes.
Mr. Spanville?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Talente?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Epstein.
Thank you. Ordinance number O2241 is an ordinance of the Township of Howell amending Chapter 188, Article 10, Zones, Section 75, Neighborhood Commercial Zone of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of Howell.
And I'm sure you're gonna be shocked to hear, this is direct implementation of a recommendation from the Langus Amendment adopted on May 5th. And as such, I would recommend a finding of substantial consistency.
Thank you, Ms. Beam. Okay, I'll entertain a motion that's substantially consistent with the master plan, please.
Can I just ask one question? What are the added uses?
Health club facilities and craft distillery.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, I'll make motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Mr. Cristiano.
Thank you. Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Durado?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Then.
Mr. Spanville?
Yes.
Ms. Talente?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Epstein.
Okay, and the last ordinance is O2243. It's an ordinance amending Article 10, Section 188-84.4, Moderate and Low Income Housing Zone 14, or ML14, subsection C9, entitled Additional Requirements and Exceptions from Other Requirements of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of Howell.
So this one is a little different. This one is consistent with our housing element and fair share plan and our settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center and the Superior Court in furtherance of the township's compliance with the Affordable Housing Obligation. So this is one last piece of the puzzle for that property, which is on West Farms Road. I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice. And this is like one last piece of the puzzle on that. But at the end of the day, it is consistent with the town's housing element and fair share plan and the settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center and the court. So I would make a recommendation of substantially consistent.
Thank you. If anybody has any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion that is substantially consistent with the master plan.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Durado?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Epstein.
Mr. Spanville?
Yes.
Ms. Talente?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Epstein.
Okay, that's it. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you.
And that's all the correspondence I have.
All right, we have resolution, case number SD-2998, Wadsworth Development LLC. Eligible voters, Mr. Cristiano, Mr. Durado, Mr. Greenfield, Mr. Husser, Mr. Seaman, Mr. Spanville, Ms. Talente, and myself. I'll entertain a motion, please. Thank you. Maybe it's tough to hear you, you may be a little too far from your microphone.
Got better?
Little better, thank you. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you.
Can I ask, what is this for voting on? I don't...
This is the Wadsworth. That was the subdivision that was along...
That was Michelle Boulevard.
Michelle Boulevard, yeah.
The resolution, Paul.
Oh, okay.
That's the application we denied.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Roll call?
Yes, please.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Durado?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Spanville?
Yes.
Ms. Talente?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. We have a submission waiver tonight, case number SP-1105, AAVRHW Property LLC.
This is Mr. Pape's case. I believe he's gonna address the board.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, Board Professionals. Kenneth Pape, on behalf of the applicant. The applicant will work to address the submission items that were identified in Ms. Newman's report. We're not going to ask this board for any submission waiver relief. So I appreciate Ms. Robano listing it, but the applicant will address those requirements. And accordingly, we do not ask anything of the board this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it, Ron? It seems too simple for me.
Don't snatch complexity out of the jaws of simpleness. That's it for this one. We'll see what the next one brings, though.
We don't, well, we don't need to, we don't need to vote or anything on it.
No, no, he's with, there's no request for any submission waivers. So there'll be a completeness determination when they submit additional documents.
So does that mean then the case, the case associated with this property is being removed from the agenda?[1564.73]
For tonight, it's being removed from the agenda. Well, there's two different, there are two entities very similar in name for due to two different properties.
You know what? I'm sorry. You're, you're right. It's AAFR, AAVR. Got it.
Correct, yeah.
Sorry.
So the, the actual, the substantive application is still on for tonight. Although Mr. Pape will give you some, some guidance on what they're going to be doing tonight versus at a future hearing.
Okay, very good. Hey, we're getting into the applications. Okay, so how are we handling this? I understand Mr. Pape would like to, to say some things about case number SP-1100, but the public has been informed that the case is being carried until August 4th.
Well.
It's new.
Mr. Pape doesn't want to talk about that. He has his own case, which is the next one, 1095 AAFR.
Oh, okay. So I, I, my correspondence is wrong? SP-110?
No, no, your, your correspondences aren't, aren't wrong. It's just the, that one had to do with Mammoth Commerce. That's a different attorney. Miss, the next application on for the board tonight and the one, the other one that Mr. Pape is here on tonight is AAFRHW SP-1095. The applicant is not proceeding in total. Well, Mr. Pape can go over it. But essentially, the applicant has a presentation tonight, but is not asking for a sub, for, for an actual vote tonight. So Mr. Pape can explain it, and Mr. Chairman, you can, you can certainly comment upon it.
So since I already opened up that can of worms, do you mind if we just take that application first and then we'll come back to?
I don't understand what we're coming back to, Mr. Chair. That's the next application on the agenda.
Oh, oh, so Mammoth Commerce is off?
Yeah, we're off.
Okay, then I'd be, I'm sorry. I really am confused today. I apologize. Okay, case number SP-1095, AAFRHW Property LLC. Mr. Pape, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, Board Professionals and Public. Kenneth Pape of the firm Hilebrand Pape, on behalf of your applicant. This is an application for preliminary and final site plan approval of property that is located on Fairfield Road. It's Block 177, Lot 8.01. It's slightly under 44 acres in size, and it's in the SED Zone. The plans that have been submitted identify two warehouse buildings with office elements. One is slightly over 369,000 square feet, and the other is slightly over 134,000 square feet. It has been deemed complete, and the applicant has been working with the commissions in town and with your board professionals. With the board's permission, we would like this evening to make a succinct or executive presentation of the site and then bring to the board's attention certain concerns that have arisen during our review with staff. I'm calling them concerns, I don't think is, is necessarily appropriate. But issues that have arisen and how we are addressing those. We then would ask that, and then we're prepared, if the board wishes to comment or give any direction, we are most appreciative of any comments or direction the board has to share. But I believe, Mr. Chair and Board Members, that 15 to 30 minutes is the nature of our presentation to you with a request that I've discussed with Ms. Robano to be on your August 18th agenda, at which time we would be making a full presentation on all points. Is that acceptable?
Mr. Pape, just before you get into testimony, I just want to be clear that I understand and the board understands. There are revisions that are in progress and revised. It's anticipated that revised plans are going to be submitted to the board's professionals. So the, the plans that the board has before it right now, while largely accurate, are still in the process of being revised.
We've made a resubmission recently, and based on comments that we've received, we see the benefit of making some further revisions to the, the site. So yes, Mr. Pape, that's accurate.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Can, can I ask a question real quick, please? So if he's going to come back in August with a full presentation, what are we listening to tonight?
If I may, we wanted to give the board a sense of the application, and then I had three issues that I wanted to bring to your attention for input or guidance, and then we would proceed with revising the plans.
I I would think that that would be. I, I, okay, I mean, I don't really.
Let me see if I could.
You understand what I'm saying? I mean, if he's going to be making a presentation in, in August, the 18th, I'm assuming that's what, you know, to what you're presenting us now, I'm just trying to understand why.
Sure. No, and, and your guidance and your direction are very important to the applicant. Our goal is.
And I'm going to ask, like, if you present whatever, that's fine, but if you're expecting them to opine on something that's going to change, I, I would highly doubt that's going to happen. So it's up to you if you want to proceed, but I don't know that these individuals are going to give you any guidance on something they know is going to change. So.
That was.
But other than that, I don't see the point, but that's up to you.
Yeah, that kind of was, that was kind of where I was. She said it better than I did. It did, it's not something that I understand, you know. If you're going to be coming in front of us with a, a different plan, a complete plan for us to vote on in August, I didn't understand why we were hearing anything tonight for this.
If I may, I can, there are the three points that we wanted to get input from you or to share our, what we're doing are the 30-foot driveway widths that are on the site where there's two separate ordinances in the town, one that says 24 feet and another one that says 30 feet. We've been working with the staff and the fire officials. We've going forward with 30 feet with two separate directions in the ordinance. We wanted to hear from the board, which is their preference, because there's two different standards in the ordinance. The second.
How can you, so let me just step, like, how can you ask them to opine on the appropriateness of the driveway width without, like, reviewing the site plan? I think a lot of it is going to depend on the site plan. So I don't think it's fair for you to ask them to give you an opinion on some generic, are you okay with 24 feet? Are you okay with 30 feet? That's not fair.
Maybe I, maybe I could, maybe I could help.
I disagree with that. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
That's okay, Mr. Pape. You know, Mr. Pape, you've been coming to us for a long time, and, and I, and I understand that you may be trying to get some information from us, and you, and I appreciate you wanting to get some input from us. The problem that I'm having with this, me personally, it's not from a board standpoint, from a personal standpoint, is I don't want the applicant to provide us with the softball questions that we get. We give someone an opinion, and then August comes around, and we're in a position where we're denying the application. Now all of a sudden, we, we've got an issue where, well, you only gave me these three, these three issues that you had, and, and now we're in the middle of, I, I think that we need to have a good, clean application. And it's my personal opinion that we should have a good, clean application and see you in August. Well, I won't see you in August. I'll be on vacation, but that's just my personal opinion. I don't.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of how I feel about it. I mean, you know, just to pick and choose a couple little things here and there until the whole application's in front of us.
Because you may be okay with, say, 24 feet. Basically, and once, once we understand the whole project and the whole situation, we've gone through the, your, your full-blown analysis with all your engineers and your professionals, who knows where, where we may end up being.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make a recommendation. So the applicant is here tonight. If they want to put on 15 minutes, the board may wish to hear it. The board is not compelled to offer any comments if it's uncomfortable tonight, but if the applicant wants to provide some general overview, they, they are here. But I think it was well-stated by yourself, Mr. Bavai, and Jen about, you know, making comments in a, in a vacuum. So please don't feel that you need to make comments. But, you know, and, and I'll certainly, you know, defer to the applicant based upon the comments that he's heard or it has heard, whether they want to move forward. But they, they are here. I don't think it's a hardship if they, to give them 15 minutes. But please don't feel that you need to comment if you're not comfortable commenting tonight.
Fair enough. So, Mr. Pape, the floor is yours on how you would like to proceed. It's your application and, and for you to present what you'd like to present, please.
Very fine. And, Mr. Chairman, the guidance of the board is the guidance that we came here for. If the board members are uncomfortable with the procedure that we outline, then I would, because we're all here. I, I have Mr. Tongto Lam, the engineer responsible for the plan sworn, will share his credentials, and we'll, we'll do an introduction of the project. And we'll go back to working with, with the town representatives and the board's professionals and return at the August 18th meeting.
Is he, yes, okay, I see him. Okay, sir, can you just raise your right hand for me? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
First name is Tongto, T-U-N-G hyphen T-O. Last name's Lam, L-A-M.
Okay, Counsel, if you could just qualify him, please.
Surely. Mr. Lam, would you share with the board, the board professionals and the public, your education and professional background?
I am a 2004 graduate from Rochester Institute of Technology, River Civil Engineering Technology Degree. I'm a PhD candidate at Rutgers. I am currently an associate at Boulder Engineering, and I am a licensed professional in New Jersey.
Thank you. Well, accept your credentials.
Thank you. Mr. Lam, before you begin, I just wanted to make, share with the board. Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that you acknowledge the, the duration of my relationship with you and with the board. Coming before the board prepared and coming before the board with an application that is worthy of approval is very important to all of us on this side. The ideas that we had were towards that goal. I understand and accept the position that was placed on the record. The, 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 the topics which we were going to ask you to comment on were the width of the roadway. And we had come up with a tree replacement plan, working with Matt Howard. And we also wanted to establish that across the street, what had been farmland for a long time is now an industrial site, and that it was our goal to provide the necessary proofs to the town to establish that that is not a farm across the street. In fact, there's a warehouse coming out of the ground as we speak and has been for the last four months. But what I would, I want the board to know how important it is. I want the board to know how important it is to the applicant and to me to make an application that is worthy of your approval. With that, I would ask if, Mr. Lam, if you could introduce two exhibits for the board. The aerial photograph locating the property. And from that, I'd like you to describe its location, zone, and neighboring uses. And then we'll go to the site plan and just do an executive summary of the site plan elements.
Is, is this a, a document that's been previously submitted?
Yes, it has, yes.
Eileen, what, what exhibit number is this?
Give me one second and I'll tell you.
Okay.
Sorry.
I'll take your time.
This is the aerial exhibit, which is A17.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Lam, if you could describe what we're looking at, the property in question, its zone and its size.
What we have is this site highlighted in yellow. It is Block 177, Lot 8.01. It's located in the SED Zone, where a warehouse permitted use. It is 45.15, 15 acres. To the west is Fairfield Row with a warehouse that is, was approved and is under construction. To the north, we have New Jersey Natural Gas with food 30 free beyond. And then to the east, we have county property, which are baking lands. And then to the south, we have Baker Row, which is a private row with residential and a nursery beyond.
And the, the property that, across the street in Fairfield Road, is the property that was previously farmland and is now the site of the industrial development under the name of Rock Solid. If you could go to the next exhibit, your site plan. And if you could just give the board an overall development scheme, the number of buildings, size of buildings, contact points with the roadway, and the method of bringing utilities onto the site.
This exhibit is the overall site layout plan. It's the same as sheet 301 in your package, but we colorize it.
It was marked as A18.
A. So as part of this development, we have to provide a right-of-way dedication. So the previously 45.15 acres is being reduced to 43.93 acres with 1.22 acres being proposed as right-of-way dedication along the Fairfield Row frontage. This project consists of two warehouses. Warehouse A, which is located off of, with frontage off from Fairfield Row. And then Warehouse B, which is located to the east of Warehouse A. So Warehouse A, the larger of the two warehouses, is 3,600, 690, I'm sorry, 3,692,42 square feet with components of office space, 5,000 square foot each office. We're planning on four tenants, so we're proposing four offices along the frontage of the building, consists of 188 parking stalls, 50 docks to the east side of the building, along with 30 trailer spaces across the drive aisle. And then Warehouse B, which is the smaller of the two warehouses, is 134,714 square foot building. Once again, we're programming it to have offices, two tenants right now is what we're planning on. 5,000 square foot for each of the office space. For this layout, we are proposing 72 parking spaces on the two short ends of the property, building. And then in terms of lower dock, there's a 30.
Mr. Lam, you froze. Mr. Lam has frozen, but he actually has completed the statements that I had asked him to place on the record. I would point out one other thing, Mr. Chair, before we leave you, and that is when we were, originally, the plan had more parking than the ordinance required. And it was pointed out to us that more parking created a lesser opportunity to plant trees on site. So the plan has now been revised to reduce the parking to that which is consistent with the ordinance, and that created a greater opportunity to plant on site. Working with Matt Howard and others through Matt Howard, we have offered to, or take all of the excess trees that cannot be planted on the site after creating that additional green area and to give them to the township to be planted by our clients at his expense on land owned by the municipality. Mr. Howard has given us an outline of how to proceed with that, and I wanted to share that program with you. It will be part of what we present at the final, when, when we are here with the full hearing. I appreciate the indulgence, Mr. Chair and Board Members. That is the direct presentation that we have for you this evening.
Mr. Pape, what is it that you wanted the application carried to?
Reviewing with Ms. Robano. It's my understanding that you have an open agenda on the 18th of August, and we would like that to be our carry date.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, I can make the announcement.
Yes, please.
Okay, the application of AAFRHW Property LLC, case number SP-1095, will be carried to the board's August 18th, 2022 meeting. That will be a virtual meeting beginning at 7 o'clock. The instructions on how to access the virtual meeting will be available on the township's website at least 10 days prior. Documents associated with the application are also available on the township's website, as well as in the township offices, and can be reviewed and inspected. There will be no further notice to property owners.
Thank you. And thank you for your indulgences. See you in August.
Thank you. Okay, get to my notes here. Next case up is SP-1103, Woodmont Senior Living LLC. Who is attorney for that?
That is Mr. Peter Wolfson. Give me a minute to bring him in.
Hello, Mr. Wolfson.
Good evening, sir. Peter Wolfson of Dave Pitney here on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you.
Mr. Wolfson, who else do you need brought into the hearing?
Stephen Santola.
Okay.
Stephen Varnekis.
Okay.
Stephen Nichols. That's the last Stephen.
Okay.
Dennis Keenan.
I have Dennis in already.
Thomas Carmen.
I don't see Thomas on there unless he's signed in as somebody else. Oh, I have him, never mind.
Thanks, Eileen. Mark Kuberski. And Nathan Mosley.
Counselor, you do recognize that, that the board, board has a 10 o'clock stop date, right, time, right?
We do, and we respect that. We're going to try to be as efficient and brief with our testimony while still putting forth all the information you'll need to make a decision.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
I don't see, I don't see Nathan.
Well, he's my last witness, so apropos of the chairman's comments, if you want us to get started, we will.
Mr. Cucchiaro, do you want to swear them all in at the same time, or?
Well, we'll, we'll take them one by one as they're being introduced, and then we'll identify or qualify as, as required. So let's start. Mr. Wolfson, you can make your opening statement and call your first witness.
Thank you, Mr. Cucchiaro. Again, Peter Wolfson of Dave Pitney here on behalf of Woodmont Senior Living LLC, seeking preliminary and final site plan with some bulk variance approvals to construct 130-unit luxury senior living community consisting of independent living apartments, assisted living units, and memory care units. The property is shown as Block 130, lots 44, 45, and 52 on your tax map. If this is approved, the applicant is proposing to consolidate those lots into one site. The property contains 11.57 acres and is located between US Highway 9 and West Farms Road in the HD1 Highway Development Zone District. The property is currently undeveloped, with the exception of a paved driveway along the Route 9 frontage. Commercial uses are located west and south of the site. Vacant land and commercial uses are located northwest of the site. There are some residential uses located to the northeast across West Farms Road and southeast along the border of Lot 52. The senior living apartments will be located within a three-story, 75,208-square-foot building. The applicant is also proposing 130 parking spaces, outdoor gathering spaces, storeware to management facilities, lighting, and landscaping. Access to the site will be provided via two ingress egress driveways, one to Route 9, and the other to West Farms Road. The applicant is also depicting on the plans a commercial pad site along the western portion of the site. The applicant is also depicting on the plans a commercial pad site along the western portion of the site for possible future development. This proposed commercial development is not before the board this evening. A separate site plan application will be required for this proposed use and will be filed in the future. As I indicated, the applicant uh application carries some variance in waiver relief, and our engineer Dennis Keenan will detail that. Uh also like to report that subsequent to a recent meeting with the board's professionals, we're going to uh identify certain points of relief that were originally implicated in the plan that we're going to be able to eliminate. I already read to you uh the lineup uh for uh our witnesses. Uh we were deemed complete at the hearing on April twenty-eight. Uh notice was mailed to uh affected property owners and published in the official newspaper. Proof of both was supplied to Eileen. We also want to acknowledge and thank Eileen for the exhibit list, which shows A one through twenty uh as well as the report list that shows B one through B fifteen, all of which we acknowledge having received and reviewed. With that, I'd like to call our first witness, Steven Nichols of Woodmont Senior Living.
Thank you.
Okay, Mister Nichols, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
My name is Steven Nichols, S T E P H E N, N I C H O L S.
Okay, go ahead, Mister Wolfson.
Thank you, Mister Cucchiaro. Steven, what is your position with Woodmont Senior Living?
I'm Vice President of Luxury Senior Living.
And what are your responsibilities uh in that position?
My responsibilities are threefold. I I look for, identify land in the state of New Jersey to uh build senior living. I work with our architect group, who is on the call right now, as well as our Vice President of Construction and Development to design the property. And then I have put together an operational platform in which we will be running the property.
Okay, can you tell us your personal experience in the senior living industry?
I've been in senior living since the year two thousand. I am a New Jersey Certified Assistant Living Administrator and have been since the, uh, I believe, the year two thousand and three. I have worked for some of the world's largest senior living operators, Sunrise Senior Living, uh Atria Senior Living, uh Brightview Senior Living before joining Woodmont. I am a certified dementia practitioner. I am a certified infection control specialist. And uh the list, I am a National Assistant Living Administrator, uh certified by our gentleman, the National for National Center for Assistant Living.
And your experience includes development and operation of all of the levels of living that will be present at this facility, correct?
That is correct.
And you were recruited to Woodmont to oversee its senior living portfolio as you uh let us know. Can you tell us briefly about Woodmont's history of success in high-quality residential development?
Sure, and for the sake of time, I'll try to be as brief as possible. Uh Woodmont has been a developer of uh luxury residential properties almost sixty years now. Next year, it'll be sixty years exactly. It was founded in nineteen sixty-three by Donald Woodmont and really set the standard for real estate development in the greater New Jersey area. Eric Whitmont, uh our CEO, joined the organization in the early nineties and really brought it to the next level. Uh really transforming the organization and bringing bring more scale to the uh to the organization. And he was instrumental in recruiting me as he saw a huge gap in the luxury senior living market in especially in the state of New Jersey. So Woodmont has been in this field for quite some time and has been producing luxury product for uh nearly six decades, and this is just the icing on the cake for the portfolio.
And I believe A seventeen is a uh four slides that you wanted to show with some features that will be illustrative of what will be finished here at this uh facility.
If someone could bring them up. Sure, I I'll talk through them as a.
I can bring them up if you want.
Certainly, thank you. I appreciate that. Well, as they're coming up, I'll briefly describe what currently exists, especially uh in the state of New Jersey. There there's been a large gap of newly developed senior housing and that has existed for some time. Senior housing product that that exists in the state of New Jersey, while successful and, you know, serves the public well, and I would never besmirch anyone, uh the product is antiquated. The product is is serves a different generation, one that is unfortunately slowly fading out of existence. And when you think about the next generation of senior who wants to move into a senior living community, they don't want to live into a community that was built twenty to twenty-five years ago, and unfortunately, they don't have many alternatives. So what ends up happening is they they end up waiting, and they wait entirely way too long, and then assisted living.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
You saw your your directory, not the file.
Yeah, sorry.
If if you'd like, I I have, I have it. I could share it if you'd like.
You can. You can go ahead and share it.
Okay, uh let's see, starts, whoa.
Sorry, there you go.
It's okay. I'm going to try this, so forgive me. I am not super proficient, but I'll do my best. Um, I guess I'll share this screen. That's that, but here, I'll pull this up. There I go. All right, so bear with me.
Steve, this is the slide deck of four that.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, A seventeen.
And this is just a, these are not only examples of, but also actual concepts from our architect and our and our division that we came up with of what our living environment is going to look like for the seniors that will be moving into our communities. Uh they're going to be, they're going to have more than one. There's not going to be a dining room. There are going to be several dining facilities, uh several different pallets, several different uh locations for residents to dine in their respective living environment, whether that be independent living, assisted living, or memory care. There's not going to be a three-selection menu. The menu is going to be very robust and very similar to that which you'd see in a high-end restaurant. Uh the residents are going to be treated like kings and queens. Uh they're going to be outdoor areas for residents to sit. Uh this is something that we designed long before COVID, but now is seems to be all the rage, and people are trying to retrofit these areas, whereas this is incorporated into our initial design. This is actually, these these photographs are actual uh images, conceptual images of the product that we are building. So this area right here is our, one of our pubs, and this is the interior design of the pub right here, some seating. Some of the finishes are are golf simulation room, our pool. So these areas, and that's really the the four quick slides I wanted to show you for the sake of time, and if you have questions, I can come back to them. But the community that we're building is to serve, like I said, the next generation of senior, and they really don't have much alternative.
Steve, you referred to the three types of uh living arrangements there, and that that allows for a continuum of care, right? So someone can move in independent and as needed, move on to other levels?
That would be correct, yes. And one of the things I like to stress, and again, I'll be brief for the sake of time, is we want our residents to appropriately uh go through the levels of care. All too often, you have uh situations where residents might be in a situation where, well, I don't want to live, move to memory care, so can you please figure out a way to keep me in assisted living? And what what ends up happening is that puts not only strain on the resident themselves, that puts strain on the employee, and that also puts strain on the services for the town, and that is not something we're going to do. We're going to make sure we establish a very proper continuum of care through independent assisted and memory care for the sake of everyone involved.
Okay, so uh in addition to a a good ratable, th- this is going to create jobs uh for uh the facility and the municipality. Can you talk to us about the uh employees, the number of employees?
Absolutely. And for the record, I like to say this, this isn't creating jobs, this is creating careers. There will be around, in this particular community, what we're envisioning is a nice split of sixty full-time uh careers coupled with sixty part-time careers. So there will be plenty of opportunity for people to work and flourish working in this environment.
Okay, we're proposing a hundred and thirty parking spaces based on your uh significant experience in developing and operating these facilities. Can you talk to us as to your opinion as to the adequacy of uh the parking?
Uh that is from a, from an assisted living perspective, that's actually more than adequate. When it comes to independent living, it is precisely adequate. Uh I I think that one hundred and thirty for one hundred and thirty will leave me plenty of spots to have visitors, guests, functions, even members of the town and or other members to come by and have adequate parking.
Okay.
What are this? Can I just, can I just, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Jen.
So do you have like hard data from other facilities to to substantiate that?
Uh the, not only do I have hard data that I could share, I don't have it at the ready. I could absolutely get it to you, but from a licensing, a licensure perspective, assisted living does not require one a one-to-one ratio.
No, I understand that. I'm talking about the town's obligation, and so I would submit, Mister Chair, that the applicant provide us with parking sites from other facilities to substantiate the parking, you know, requirement as stated. So something that you probably, like, we did discuss this previously, um I think you guys should give us parking counts from other facilities.
And and we will have some parking testimony a little bit later uh from uh.
But Mister Smith, that's not, um I understand that, but what I'm asking is.
We hear you, Jen.
All right, exactly. I know you hear me, but I just want to make sure it's clear, so I got it.
I got it.
Okay, what are visitation hours?
Uh visitation hours, and I'm I'm glad that question came up. Visitation hours will be all day. There will be manned, there will be someone manned at the front desk twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. The the doors will be locked, and you would need to be buzzed in after nine PM, but it's it's especially in independent living, these residents, they they, if they want a guest, they could have a guest. They're not, this is not a locked uh locked situation, nor is it a skilled nursing facility. So this this is their home, and they could have guests whenever they choose.
And can you describe the nature of the deliveries that'll be coming to the site and how they'll be handled?
Certainly, um bulk deliveries such as food deliveries and or old furniture deliveries will be, will occur in the rear loading dock of the building. Uh regular FedEx deliveries will go right to the front and will be scanned in.
Okay, and can you talk about refuse handling?
Oh, okay, but how often do we anticipate these kinds of things? Every day, every other day?
Well, I would expect mail to be every day.
Well, that I get, but like, bigger package deliveries.
Um, the food delivery would probably be uh twice per week. I would envision a big delivery, and that would probably be about it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Talk to us about how refuse and waste will be handled.
We're going to have a compactor on site, uh because we have full-service restaurants, we'll be producing a significant amount of waste, but we intend on compacting that, and that will be picked up twice weekly as well.
Is there a special um pickup for any medical ways like Sharps or or anything like that?
Medical ways such as Sharps, uh we will have licensed containers and storage containers and refuse containers inside the community themselves, and we will have the appropriate license pickup handled uh whenever needed.
Okay.
Okay. And and the facility will contain seven Medicaid beds, which are available to Howell for affordable credits, correct?
That is correct.
I I have no more questions of Steven.
Thank you. Anybody from the board have any comments or questions?
Mister Chair, I have a a question.
Yes, sir.
Um Mister Nichols, how does this project uh directly benefit the people of Howell, New Jersey?
And it isn't a job creation and uh an ability to, for the seniors of Howell to continuously live in Howell. One of the things that is wonderful about a community like this is we want to ingrain ourselves into the township of Howell. Uh we are not, we are not building indoor designing cookie cutter properties that are going to scatter throughout the 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 state. We are building communities that will not only mesh from an architectural standpoint with the town, but we want to be involved in the town. So if there are meetings that need to be hosted, if there are fundraisers that need to be had, what's wonderful about our clientele is come nine PM, eight PM, it tends to get quite quiet. And we're have, we have a a tremendous amount of amenity space that we will gladly open up to the town. We want people in our doors. It's not, again, this is not going to be a senior living facility that is a skilled nursing home that people, we shut the doors and don't let people in. We want you coming in. We want you to enjoy everything.
So that's going to be consistent with, that that'll be consistent with Woodmont's established, I think you said, six-decade uh track record of being a a good partner with the municipalities within which it develops, correct?
Correct. And and just to further, uh Mister Cristiano, that having multi-generational programming not only will benefit the town, but it will also benefit the seniors that live there. So it is, it is not, that's not lip service for you. That is something that is very near and dear to my heart as someone who cares for seniors.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other questions, next witness, please.
Thank you. I'd like to call Dennis Keenan, a French and parole, the project engineer.
Hello?
Hold on one moment. Okay, you just raised your right hand. You swear or affirm the testimony about to give this boards the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
My name is Dennis Keenan, D E N I S, Keenan, K E E, N A N.
Okay, Mister Wolfson, if you can qualify, Mister Keenan.
Thank you, Mister Cucchiaro. Dennis, can you share with us uh your educational professional experience in licensures?
Sure, uh I have a Bachelor's of Science degree in civil engineering from Virginia Tech. I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Maryland, and New York, all licenses in good standing. I've been practicing engineering for approximately twenty-five years. I've been uh appeared before numerous boards throughout the state of New Jersey and Pennsylvania, uh presenting applications such as the ones before you tonight. And I also currently um am a certified municipal engineer, certified floodplain manager, and am a board professional on uh for five different municipalities.
Mister Chairman, we'd ask that he be accepted as an expert in the field of engineering.
Oh. I'm sorry, I I guys, I I need, I need five minutes. I'm sorry, I got a family issue here.
Board will take a short recess. They'll be back at eight fourteen. The planning board will now reconvene.
Chairman, I think we're at the point where Dennis had led us through his educational and professional experience, and we asked that he be accepted as an expert in the area of engineering.
Yes, we'll accept your credentials.
Thanks very much. Dennis, can you give us an overview of the property and orientation to the surrounding area and lead us through the proposed development? Can you share your screen?
Sure.
Yes, let me. Want to use?
Ken, I'll share the screen. I'm I start by putting up an exhibit that I uh was submitted to the boards. We should have this exhibit number, but this is an aerial of the property and the surrounding area.
Just for the record, Dennis, that's A eighteen.
Okay. Uh so this application is for the uh property located along Route Nine, West Farm Road. West Farm Road is located just above uh the property that property is outlined in red, right? My cursor is floating around, and then Route Nine is off to the west. Uh property is known as Block One Thirty, Lots Forty-four, Forty-five, and Forty-six. It's comprised of approximately eleven point five acres, and it's located in the HD One Highway Development Zone where assisted living is a permitted use. Across the street of West, West Farm Road is, where my cursor is, is somewhat undeveloped parcel uh with a couple residential homes located on the opposite side of West Farm Road uh along the, zoom in a little bit here, along the uh eastern edge off of Fox Hill Drive is another group of residential homes abutting the property. To the south, located off of Route Nine, is a commercial development. This is uh includes what's the White Castle, a daycare, and then the Regal Plaza Shopping Center. Just below it, across the street, across Route Nine from our property is again a shopping center. It's the ideal plaza shopping center as well as undeveloped land. Just diagonally to the northwest of our property, where my cursor is right now, is the suburban propane property. And then located at the corner of West Farm Road and Route Nine is the assisted gas station, while diagonally across the intersection is the Home Depot shopping complex. As I stated, these are three separate lots comprising approximately eleven point five acres. Uh as part of these applications, our intention to combine those three lots into a single lot. Uh what's proposed for the property, and if I could, I'll jump to the site plan sheet of our. Uh, what's proposed for the property, and if I could, I'll jump to the site plan sheet of our submitted site plan set. This is sheet three of sixteen titled Site Plan for Aspire, uh, Luxury Senior Living at Howell. Uh, this shows again the subject site. You can kind of see the outline that we were just looking at and read on the other sheet with uh, it's oriented the same way with north, uh, facing the top of the page, West Farm Road at the top. And then Route Nine kind of off to the left on the side of the page. This is a three-story in that hatched color. There is a three-story senior living facility. The building's comprised of, uh, seventy units of assisted living and memory care and then sixty units of independent living. Uh, that's a total one hundred and thirty year units within the building. Driveway access is proposed off of both, uh, Route Nine and both, and off of West Farm Road. It's noted, uh, and it was mentioned by Mr. Wilson that there is a commercial pad on the site. There's a commercials pad just off of Route uh, nine. I'm circling here. That's look, I just labeled future commercial pad site. And that is located off the STEM driveway off of, uh, Route Nine. There's a continuous driveway loop that goes around the assisted living building and and wraps around the entire facility. All the parking is proposed off of that loop road. There are a hundred and thirty parking stalls posed off that road. Loop road, um, and as was just testified, the, the number of parking stalls is consistent with, uh, this type of facility. Um, and is adequate for the applicant. Uh, we provided a parking total on our plans, uh, based upon, um, our understanding of the requirement, which indicated a half of parking stall per assisted uh, living unit, which would be seventy units, half of stall, thirty-five spaces required for the sixty independent, uh, living units. We totaled that at one per unit for a total of sixty and ninety-five required. Um, CME had reviewed this and in their letter indicated that a hundred and forty-five should be required based upon the, uh, independent living counting as apartments, one and two bedroom apartments. And based upon that, their calculation, uh, it would come to one forty-five. We just ultimately reviewed independent living as a different um, parking count than what would be considered with conventional apartments, one and two bedrooms apartments. Um, and so that wouldn't be, uh, uh, an appropriate, uh, or a typical, uh, parking scenario required for this type of living. Um, but with that, if we even consider a hundred and forty-five spaces are the requirement for this site, um, we are, one of the things about this, what we're doing here is we are including the E V parking for electric vehicles. Uh, so we do have twenty electric vehicle parking stalls, uh, kind of interspersed throughout the site. You can see them with these designations here. Those are the required electric vehicle parking with the charging station um, to, uh, allow the residents to charge their electric vehicles. Um, those, based upon the u- updated regulations that came out, electric vehicle parking stalls count as two parking stalls. So out of those twenty, those are allowed to double count. Um, we are only allowed to do that up to ten percent. So essentially, uh, ten percent being thirteen parking stalls can count as double. So our actual parking count based upon this updated regulation is a hundred and forty-three parking stalls. Um, so even if we compare that against the one forty-five that's required, uh, we feel we're now within two parking stalls. Ultimately, we feel comfortable with the parking that's provided. Um, if, if it's the board's wish to add two additional stalls, we'd certainly be willing to do that and there is available space to add two stalls to make that work out. Um, however, we're comfortable with what's here. It was testified by the, uh, owner. Yes.
Can you do me a thought to interrupt you right there? I just wanted to make sure that the board's, uh, fully aware of what you're explaining here. So your calculation, you came up with, I think, how many spaces did you say that you require? And and how did you come up with that calculation?
We came up with ninety-five parking stalls. So that was based upon seventy assisted living units based upon R S I S. That's, um, considered a half a parking stall per unit. Uh, then when we looked at the independent living, we used sixty independent living, sixty units, so one parking stall per unit. Um, I've seen that used as the standard of half a parking stall per independent living, but I think that's a little too low. Um, so we used one parking stall per unit to get sixty to have a requirement of ninety-five.
Okay, so you, you're saying ninety-five is required. Because assisted living is not included in the parking calculation ordinance, we also referred to R S I S. We came up with a hundred and forty-five spaces required based on one and two bedroom units for a garden park. And so it's about fifty more spaces required. Um, physically on this plan, you're proposing a hundred and thirty spaces, but, but as Mr. Keenan mentioned, the new E V, uh, ordinance that's statewide now, um, actually double counts E V spaces. It's, it's kind of a, you know, quirky requirement that they threw in there. So that means that if they're providing twenty E V spaces physically on the plan, it actually counts double that towards your parking calculation, um, to meet the ordinance requirement. Up to ten percent. So again, it gets a little confusing, but it's not doubling a twenty, it's doubling ten percent of that. So that gets them to about a hundred and forty-three spaces. Uh, hundred and thirty physical, a hundred and forty-three towards the calculation. Um, also twenty E V spaces are required based on, uh, the number of units here. Uh, I believe there was nineteen on the plan. Are you saying that there's either twenty or that you will provide twenty on a revision?
Um, just double check the number here.
Yeah, it says twenty there, the bottom.
Yeah.
So it was a to- total of twenty.
The E V requirement and based on our calculation from R S I S with the E V duplicate allowance, uh, you're up to a hundred and forty-three spaces.
Correct. And I think you're right. I, I just calculated, I just counted nineteen. So if we, if we're short on one E V, we'll add that.
You'll provide twenty, okay?
Yeah.
So Jordan, uh, I'm trying to follow your math here. What's, what's the conclusion? They have enough spaces or they're short?
So again, it gets confusing. Physically, they have a hundred and thirty spaces. They're allowed to count a certain amount double because they're E V. So on paper, they're gonna have a hundred and forty-three spaces.
And your R S I S calculation required how many total?
One hundred and forty-five.
So they're short two.
Correct.
And we can't find two spaces on this site?
No, I, I think we can. If that's the, if, if the board would like us to provide two additional parking stalls, we'll do that.
I mean, personally, the, the, the less waivers and the less the variance requirements, the smoother the application goes.
That's fine by us. We'll, we'll sort of agree to that. All right, um. So.
So wait, well, let's just step back for a second. So Ms. Bean.
Yes.
Your, your opening statement to Mr. Nichols indicated that I, I'm sorry, Miss, Mr. Cuchero, since I don't have video, am I providing any testimony or am I allowed to at least ask these questions?
No, you, you can ask whatever questions you wish. You're not testifying.
Okay, so Ms. Bean, in the opening discussion with Mr. Nichols, you had asked for some evidence that they had an adequate parking. If Mr. Zou is stating that R S I S requires a hundred and forty-five and they, they, they provide a hundred and forty-five, do we still need that evidence?
So they still need a variance for the two spots. It's up to you guys whether you decide you want it.
He said he's gonna comply.
Oh, you're gonna provide, you're gonna provide the extra two?
Yes.
So if they're gonna provide, like, my recommendation was if they're asking for relief for the parking, they should provide documentation justifying why they need less. If they're gonna comply with the parking and they don't need the variance, there's no need to provide that information.
Thank you for the clarification. From, I just wanted to put that in my notes. Thank you. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, um, I'll continue on with my testimony, uh. So we are also providing, uh, a network of sidewalk around the perimeter of the building and up against the, the parking area, the drive aisles. Uh, it was also noted in the CME review letter that, um, sidewalks should be installed along Route Nine and West Farm Road as well. Uh, we would agree to do that, provide a, a sidewalk along Route Nine in front of the site and then along the extensive West Farm Road. Um, and then that we will provide a sidewalk connecting Route Nine to the site. We'll provide that sidewalk to comply. Additionally, it was noted that, uh, in, in the CME review letter per section one eighty-eight dash two, two, six F, some protective device is required between the curving and the sidewalk. Um, we would agree to provide that, uh, you know. We'll basically work with your professional to establish some acceptable device, uh, such as a bollard, which I think is typically used. Um, you know, ultimately, it's not our preference to include a bollard. We're a little concerned about the, the visual impact, but if that's the preference of the board, we'll certainly comply with, um, that requirement and incorporate that into the plan. Um, just want to note in that requirement that what we're showing on the plans right now are nine by nineteen parking stalls, which are compliant with ordinance and in excess of the nine by eighteen required by R S I S. Um, we would just ask if we are gonna provide those bollards, we'd just like to reduce the parking size from nine by nineteen to nine by eighteen to allow that extra foot to put some sort of bollard or other protective device, uh, along between the, the sidewalk and the parked vehicles. Um, and facilitate that rooms. That would be a relief we would be requesting from the ordinance, but we would be in compliance with the R S I S standards.
Ms. Bean, will you have any opinion on that since you brought up parking earlier?
No, I think that what, what is being discussed here is the length of the parking stall. I agree, it's R S I S compliant. I would take no exception to the nine by eighteen spaces and, uh, you know, in addition, they're gonna put the protective device like we typically require. So I think it's a, a, a good solution.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Additionally, it was noted that, um, curb ramps are required at least every sixty-five feet around the property. Currently, we're showing them where we thought it was appropriate, um, but again, we'll work with your professionals to provide curb ramps and compliance with the ordinance and in appropriate locations around the property. Uh, again, we have this circulating drive aisle around the building. Uh, the drive aisle right now is designed at twenty-five feet. That's access to the twenty-four foot requirement of R S I S. And I, I believe the ordinance states that twenty-four feet, um, for this type of facility, but, uh, Fire Chief, uh, Robert Lewis had indicated in his review letter that he would like to see a thirty-foot drive aisle, uh, be provided. Ultimately, we're comfortable with the, a, a fire truck and navigate the property with a twenty-foot, five-foot drive aisle. It's a, that should be a comfortable drive aisle for him to drive a fire truck through the facility. Um, so we gave, uh, Chief Lewis a call to just kind of understand what his concern is and how we could accommodate that. Um, when we talked to him, I, I talked to him directly and he indicated to me that, uh, he had no concerns about driving a fire truck through it. He was comfortable at twenty-five feet that could provide him adequate access through the site. His only concern was having adequate space to set up his, uh, ladder truck where he could extend his outriggers and, uh, with enough space and with the proper ground cover to set up his ladder truck and then fire. I discussed with him the possibility of setting up particular locations around the property to facilitate the outriggers uh, setup and, and he indicated that he had no problem with that and he'd be happy to work with us. And looking at the plan, he felt comfortable that there was, there are enough spots around the property that we could adequately set up a fire truck providing enough room for the outriggers to drop down if it's coming on a, on a sidewalk. Make sure the sidewalk is appropriately constructed to support the outriggers, uh, and such. So we would agree to work with uh, Chief Lewis to find an acceptable solution. So it was noted that in the CME review letter that section one eighty-eight dash one oh six F one A requires a thirty-foot drive. We weren't quite sure whether that applied because when we initially read it, we saw that apply to commercial and or industrial properties. Um, what we have proposed here is a, uh, residential use. Um, so we didn't think that applied, but if that, if, if the board feels that does apply and the board professionals do, then we would ask for relief just based on the fact that we would work with the fire chief to establish appropriate locations to, um, set up his fire truck. With that, uh, I'll move to signs. Uh, we have provided three signs on the property. There's one sign located down at the bottom of the site along Route Nine, and then we have two signs shown on the entrance drive coming into the site from West Farm Road. Um, ultimately, we, we understand that only two signs are permitted on the site where we have three and only one sign is permitted at, and, uh, at, at any given road. Um, ultimately, the, the reason we're doing this is you can see up at this location on West Farm Road. Uh, if we have, we have a sign setback ten feet from the right away, which is required. And, and, and this tree line right in front is what we're try, we're trying to save and, and maintain that tree line along West Farm Road. So when, if we have one sign that is set up, uh, perpendicular to the road, you would be able to see it maybe traveling east, but you wouldn't be able to see the sign traveling west because it would be blocked behind the trees. So this configuration providing one sign angled on both sides of the entrance, I provided, uh, a more, um, a better configuration which allowed the motors to see the sign appropriately coming and approaching from either direction. Um, and, and really with the purpose of, of maintaining the existing vegetation on, um, along the side of the road. So we are requesting relief based on the fact that we're trying to, um, maintain that vegetation. Additionally, we're requesting relief from the setback for the sign along Route Nine. You can see here, we have the sign is set back ten feet from Route Nine. The ordinance requires that it's set back ten feet from roads and twenty feet from highways. Uh, and you'll see that we have an irregular shape of the road along Route Nine. The, the actual road here is kind of curved into the site. I should say the property line is curved into the site and the right away curves into the site. And then Route Nine at this point is actually curved the other way. And I, and I think there must have been a relocation of Route Nine in the, in the past that kind of realigned the road and moved it. What that does, it creates a big separation between our property and the actual pavement. Uh, so right now, the separation between the edge of road and our property line is sixty-nine feet. So when we've set our sign back ten feet from that, it's seventy-nine feet back from the pavement. Uh, not the travelway, but the pavement. Um, so when we look along Route Nine and you look at most of the signs that are compliant to the property line along Route Nine, uh, a lot of those are thirty-five or forty-five feet back from the pavement where ours is setbacks. It's more difficult to see along Route Nine. Um, so that, we're asking for that relief, uh, of ten, the ten-foot relief to address the irregular shape of the law. Additionally, we do have a buffer proposed. Yeah.
Are we talking about the size of the signs?
Sure.
Cause the information we have shows they're not compliant in, in size. Is that gonna change?
Yes, and actually, you know what? I need to defer to the applicant on that. Just confirm. So let me, let me confirm that and we'll come back to that if we could.
The signs will comply.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Uh, next is the, uh, the buffer. We have provided a, uh, a fifty-foot buffer along the residential properties that back up to, uh, our site. And that is a, a fifty-foot buffer that is going to remain undisturbed and with the existing vegetation. Um, so and, and in a little bit, we'll have a landscape architect on who's gonna talk about how we're gonna maintain that existing vegetation, but also supplement to improve the quality of the screening along that fifty-foot buffer. Uh, it was raised in CME review letter that relief is required from section one eighty-eight dash sixty-three A. Sixty-three D and sixty-three E for the ordinance, no buffering along West Farm Road. Um, and, and again, this is similar to a, a section we had just talked about earlier. Um, that, that ordinance specified that it was, uh, it was for commercial uses where this was a residential use. Uh, we're proposing here as a residential use, so we didn't think the buffer was required. Um, and didn't seem that, that it was applicable here, um, in that case. But however, if we're looking at this, um, and, and looking at what has occurred and what we're proposing, I should say, here, uh, I think we are providing some screening and buffering along, uh, West Farm Road. And I'll, I'll do is I'll go to the grading plan.
Mr. Keenan, before you continue.
Sure.
Can you explain to me how this is considered a residential?
Um, basically, it, it's living quarters. Uh, it's, it's in accordance with R S I S, um, for the residential site improvement standards.
From a building code standpoint, does it classify as a residential use or is it a?
I, I couldn't testify to that.
Okay, well.
Well, I'm viewing it from a site plan standpoint and RSI standards and the, you know, fact that assisted living is specifically called out in RSIS.
Mr. Wilson, at some point, you're going to have an architect.
Indeed.
All right. We'll, we'll hold that question until we talk to the architect. Thank you.
Well, I also want to just jump in in terms of, I don't think you characterized the ordinance in terms of the buffer requirement correctly. It doesn't say commercial industrial. It says site plan. This is a site plan, correct?
Absolutely.
So therefore, it's not exempt from the buffer requirements, which is under the site plan requirement in section sixty three. So like, I think you made it like it's only applicable to commercial. We have major subdivisions that are buffered against major subdivisions here in town. So we, this is, this is not atypical for our buffer.
Ms. Beam, I would be, I would be interested in having Mr. Keenan provide some testimony as to what is causing the application to not comply with the buffer instead of starting with, well, we're providing with some screening. Can you just provide some testimony first as to what is actually causing the variance? Maybe zoom in on the plan as to where you're on the plan and where on the site is actually causing this issue.
Before you get, excuse me, before you get into that, I know we have an exhibit, which is a showing the landscape. Is that something we can bring up? I think it might.
Yes.
Relevant to the discussion.
So that's right here. So this is right along West Farm Road. And you can see this is, right here is the existing vegetation that we're trying to maintain along West Farm Road. And I'll leave that to the landscape architect to talk in more detail about it. He was out there with board's professionals to review the existing vegetation and what would be appropriate in either constructing a berm or what type of screening would be best suited. And I think they, they looked at that and determined that what was out there was it, was it?
Mr. Keenan, you're deflecting the question. Could you just get?
Okay.
And I'm trying to, I'm trying to take a page out of Stephen Covey and first seek to understand why we are not complying with our buffer. And then we can talk about whether what you're proposing makes sense to not comply with it or not. But as of right now, me personally, I'm trying to understand why we're not complying with it and why we can't comply with it. What's causing us to not comply with it?
Well, it, it's just, you know, right now we need to we need to provide, we need to provide the parking up front and we need to provide the access aisles up front.
So I'm just, I think Chairman is delicately trying to ask you if you reduce the size of the building, would you be able to comply with the buffer?
Not even that, Jen. I wouldn't even get to that part yet. What is causing it? Is it the curb line literally closest to, to to West Farms Road that's actually within the fifty foot buffer? Like what is in the fifty foot buffer?
The fifty foot buffer, well, let me just say.
Is there a fifty foot buffer line?
The curb line is fifty one feet from the right away. So we're.
So all the grading.
The grading and the retaining wall, which is on the.
Correct.
Thank you.
So it's the grading and the retaining wall that's physically in the buffer.
Correct.
The actual parts of the, the, the project, say the roads and so forth, those are outside the buffer?
Correct. Okay. Yeah. Let me just, I should have a dimension on there, but I'm going to just for all our sakes and make sure I'm not making it up inappropriately. I'm going to scale that. I just said forty. Yeah. So right there, that's the fifty feet.
And Ms. Beam, is having a retaining wall in our buffer, is that that what's causing the non-compliance?
Well, and all the grading. So the, the reason that that fifty one feet enables that parking lot to be there is because there's grading around it, right?
And what's the grading? Is that, is that just to provide additional buffering and screening?
No, it's not buffering. It's to stay, it's to get the land level enough to put the parking lot on it. So the grading would be different or pulled back if the development was farther away from the buffer. But that grading and the retaining wall, neither one of which are permitted. And, and you know, they're a result of the proposed development plan.
And I'm sorry, can you zoom in on the grade?
Sure. Down here.
So all those lines that go from like one forty two to one fifty, all those lines, that's grading. That's actual construction and disturbance.
Okay. So let's just hypo, hypothesize here so I can understand from my notes, not, not making any recommendations at all. Just trying to understand the, the issue. Let's say hypothetically, they put a retaining wall at the curve. The curb line was the retaining wall. And this, this, this retaining wall was outside, at, past this fifty feet. And therefore they required no more grading. They don't have to do this eight or nine foot of grading change. Would that be in compliance with our ordinance?
I mean, that also wouldn't, however, that would be because they'd want to save the trees there. So you know, technically they, they couldn't build the berm with landscape plantings if you're also going to save the trees.
So a retaining wall outside of the buffer, so we don't have to disturb the land, will bother the trees? I'm sorry, I don't understand the response.
No, to fulfill the ordinance requirement, they would have to provide, you know, typically we see the berm and then plantings on the berm. But the ordinance allows for them to instead save trees as long as it's worthwhile to save those trees. And of course we could supplement, but that doesn't fulfill those four different options they have to provide two of them.
You're, so you're saying our ordinance in order for, because of the residential bumber also requires them to put a berm and then plant trees on top of the berm?
Right. But allow us for the option to, you know, save what's existing instead.
Okay. Let's put that off, let's put that question off to the side first. And let's just stick with this, we, disturbance of the, the land issue.
Right, Mr. Chairman, we are going to have the landscape testimony coming up next. And I know we referenced the site inspection that occurred, and I think that will be very useful in considering the somewhat technical variance relief that's necessary. We do, as we've just established, have a fifty foot setback area and we can talk to the nature of what it'll look like and how it will.
Well, Mr. Wilson, I think he asked a question about like what would happen if there was a retaining wall. I think there was actually a question about it.
Yeah. What, what, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get to a point where it sounds like there is a solution to get, get away from the variance relief. And I'm not hearing anything from your engineer, what that solution could look like.
Dennis, if we, if we did the wall at the end of the fifty feet, is that a, what, what are the implications of that from a appearance perspective and a design perspective?
Mr. Wilson, I'm worried about appearance. Right now I'm worried about compliance. Then we can get to appearance.
Sure. So I, I think we could certainly put a wall in. I don't necessarily want to put it right at fifty feet. There will be some disturbance behind it, but it'll minimize the amount of clearing that would be required. We'll still have to, to construct the wall, we still have to do some clearing behind it to put in GeoGrid and get it constructed. But I think it is viable to minimize that by extending a wall, say right around that one forty two contour. And, and take out this grading around where my cursor is.
Okay.
Minimize that.
Thank you. Well, if it's okay with, with you guys, I'd just like to make that a footnote, let you continue your.
Sure.
Your testimony. If someone else on the board has, has additional questions.
Mr. Chair, I have it down in my notes. I just want to note for the record that what they're referring to would still require relief, just so you know.
Yeah, I get it. I get it. I get it. He's giving me what he thinks his solution is and let's hear the rest of the testimony and probably circle back to it.
Understand.
Okay. All right. Appreciate that. So I guess what we've talked about the buffer issue. I'll get to the trash enclosure. There is an ordinance, section one eighty eight dash two two four G and thirty two C. Six of the ordinance, which requires planting around a trash enclosure. And art, and I'll just. Our trash enclosure is located in the side yard, not in the side yard, but the side of the building. It's, it's located right back here off of the drive aisle. What we're providing here is it's an enhanced, and I would say somewhat architectural enclosure. It's got brick columns at the corners and in the middle and then steel panel fencing around this. This isn't a, isn't a standard wood fence trash enclosure. It is, it's definitely an architectural feature and it's a decorative way of screening the trash. What we're not meeting, and I think that is something the ordinance speaks to, but what we're not meeting is the landscaping required around the enclosure. And the problem with that is the configuration of where this is, the fact that it's off of the drive aisle. So we don't have the ability to actually put any landscaping here directly in front of it, which would obviously be ideal, but we are noting that it is located across the vegetated buffer that's going to be maintained and will also be supplemented. And I think that's something we'd certainly be working with your professionals to provide appropriate screening within that area to supplement it the best we can. I will be happy to add any other screening around, but based upon that configuration. And it is really hard to kind of create another configuration that would make sense on this property where we could put screening directly in front of it. So I think what we're offering is screening across the drive aisle rather than directly in front of the enclosure. So again, brought up in the CME review letter was a request that the right away be normalized along West Farm Ave. Right now there's a little notch in the right away. And it was requested that be normalized with a thirty foot half width right away provided. And we take no exception to providing that on West Farm Ave. West Farm Road, sorry. From stormwater perspective, the project does disturb over an acre of land. It creates over a quarter acre of impervious. Therefore, it is considered a major development, subject to stormwater regulations, including water quantity, quality, groundwater recharge and green infrastructure. So these requirements are being met through a couple of different scenarios on the property and multiple stormwater structures, which is a requirement of the green infrastructure standards that are out now. So what we are doing is we are first, it's kind of all happening in series on this property. The first thing we're doing is taking all the roof run off that's clean and discharging that into underground chambers. We have three separate underground chambers. My first was kind of one off on the west, one off on the south and one off on the east, which are going to collect the roof runoff into those three separate chambers where it's clean runoff. And that'll be infiltrated in the ground to meet our groundwater recharge standards. Secondly, our water quality basins, those are being provided where they're going to allow the water to pond in those basins. Immediately after the storm, the water seeps into the ground, well, into the soil underneath that has an underdrain system. And what we're putting in there is an eighteen inch layer of a bio basin soil mix. It's a soil mix that's specified by the DEP, which is suitable for cleaning up and providing more quality treatment to the stormwater runoff that leaves the property. And it goes into the underdrain system underneath that soil and then discharges into the water quantity basin. That's basin three here, and that's where we provide the water quantity reductions required by the ordinance, where we'll need the fifty, seventy five and eighty percent reductions required for the two and ten and a hundred year storms. So this is compliant with the stormwater regulations and the latest stormwater regulations. During construction, all activities are, be performed in accordance with the Soil and Water Control Standards for the state. We already submitted for a Soil and Water Control permit and will comply with those standards. So the existing site drains really from kind of the, the north to the south. It drains, the high point is up in West Farm Road and then drains down towards Route nine, as we talked about there. Some walls required to accommodate the, the change in grade and minimize the amount of disturbance required on the site. We are, we do have some walls that are over four feet in height located within the setback, the front yard setback. And we talked about the one up front. And we think we could modify that one and comply. Right now it's just this, this portion that's in the front yard is just slightly over four feet. So we can modify that to comply with the ordinance standard. We do have.
Wait, you're going to comply with the height portion of the ordinance standard?
Correct.
The second piece of it is fifty percent open, which you're not going to comply with and still would need relief from, correct?
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that. All right. Yes.
Standard, yes.
Okay. I thought that was only if you were over four feet.
No.
And why can't we comply with that?
Because there's a retaining wall. So in our ordinance, walls and fences are in the same section, so there's no differentiation between the two. We require in the front yard, no higher four feet, fifty percent open, anticipating a fence. But the wall section is the same section, so it's the same requirement. So they need relief. I take no exception. Obviously, a fifty percent open retaining wall would defeat the purpose.
Right. So, so in your opinion, there's really no other engineering solution.
I mean, I would defer that to Jordan in terms of engineering solution. What I'm going to say is, is that if there's the need for a wall, there's no ability for that wall to be fifty percent open.
Is there a more, in case of Mr. Rizzo, is there another creative way to, to, to deal with the topography issues that are requiring the retaining wall?
Well, I guess the first part, obviously there's, there's no fifty percent open retaining wall, and I don't recommend we start here. So I think as long as there is a retaining wall, that, that waiver will be required. Sure, they can always revise the grading to remove that small portion from the, the front property line. It's the top right here. It extends over probably fifteen, twenty feet. So they would have to look at regrading that area if they want to.
Does this retaining wall continue to be in our, our, our buffer zone? So.
The, the buffer line is probably in line with the curb. And then about ten feet beyond that is the dashed line, which is the sixty foot front yard setback. So it's two different, two different areas of relief here. The, the, the buffer is to fifty feet and then the one that's specific to the retaining wall and fences, that's sixty feet, which is the front yard setback.
So in, in your, in your professional opinion, do you believe that they could come up with a creative way of, of maybe regrading this so that they could remove that, that wall and that relief?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, they can always absolutely regrade it to, to remove that area.
Yeah. The, the one, the one thing I just want to bring up is the fact that, you know, I think part of, and I'll get this to this in the, in the next section we're going to talk about here. But part of the, what I perceive as the, the reason that ordinance exists is you don't want to be looking on, on, you don't want to be on the road looking at a wall on a, on a property. And the way this wall is configured, when you're on the road, you're actually looking over the wall. So the, it's actually the residents that are looking at the wall. So I think from a visual obstruction standpoint, I don't, I don't think this is true.
I don't know how the rest of the board feels, Mr. Keenan. My issues are more, more aligned with stuff, more stuff is in the buffer. We have, we have the buffer for a reason. It's there for a reason. And so far you haven't convinced me there's a reason why we should put stuff in the buffer. But again, I, I'm giving you the courtesy of continuing, letting you to continue your, your testimony and see if maybe you can sway me on that.
I, I guess the other side of that same section, the ordinance, where that comes up is this basin down along Route nine. And again, this is kind of a similar fashion. We have a wall that's over four feet. It's, it's basically at five feet in the front yard. So that would need a waiver from the ordinance if it's not. It's solid. It's not fifty percent open. So that would be required. But again, I'm looking at it from the standpoint of if, if the requirement, and this is again, this is not a buffer area, so this is a little different. I viewed the ordinance as the concern being the truthfulness of a split wall that, that fifty percent wanting to look open. This is, this wall that's constructed here is actually below grade. So when you're driving by and looking at it, you're actually looking over the wall. You won't really even notice the wall. So in this instance, I was requesting a waiver. requesting a waiver based upon that.
And Mr. Chairman, just to clarify this one, this wall, the the sole purpose is to provide more storage in the basin. So the two options for an above ground basin are you can burn it up and you can slope it at three to one, or you can wall it on one or more sides, and that just provides you more storage that you can hold more water essentially. So.
How do we how do we protect it so that so that children in here don't end up in a swimming pool?
Yeah, it it is fully fenced.
Without without way of, you know, usually we have nice grades where where people can still walk out.
Dennis, I think that it's fenced.
Yes, it is fenced. So and and one of the required, one of the comments from the board was that we we will provide an area for access and we'll we'll put a slope area to 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 get in, which would be a way for someone to just walk out.
And this is a private basin. You guys have to maintain this. The DPW doesn't have any input on this, correct?
Correct. It it will be home by the, yeah.
I I made that comment. Everybody's kind of got that look. I'm looking at your faces and you're just like in agreement or you don't, nobody agrees with me that that building a swimming pool that somebody may fall in and not have an ability to get back out is not a concern.
Dennis, you indicated Dennis, you can provide a way to get out.
Correct.
And Mr. Keenan, the basin will be dry, not during rain events, correct? So it's not a wet basin. And there will be a a drive aisle essentially that you'll provide. It's not shown on this plan now. It'll be about a ten to one slope, so ten percent slope with a gate, and then everywhere else will be fenced, correct?
Correct.
And is this one of those those areas? I know in the past, we've we've asked for, you know, thorny bushes. Is this one of those situations?
That wouldn't be a problem to provide something like that.
Do the board's professionals agree with that type of scenario?
I think the technical term was hos- hostile vegetation.
Thank you. We in agreement that that would be possibly a good idea.
So Chairman, can you clarify what you mean by that?
In the past, where we've had had situations like this, we may get hostile vegetation so that someone trying to get to it is getting stuck and.
Things with thorns that are prickly that make you think twice before getting in there.
So Laura has numerous examples of what constitutes hostile vegetation.
Got it.
She actually coined the term, so.
Is that something the applicant would be?
Yes. We would be agreeable to that. Yes.
Thank you.
It was also brought up in the CME review letter that structural calculations would be required. We'd certainly agree to that. You know, we'd love to do it as a condition of approval and provide prior to construction that provide the structural calculations to your engineer for their review.
Mr. Keenan, just to clarify that, that's acceptable if it would be a condition of an approval. However, we would want those design calculations prior to any resolution compliance. So yes, before construction, but also before you you get your final engineering sign off.
All right, that's we could comply with that.
One step further, I mean, Mr. Rizzo, it's highly unlikely that we're going to finish today. Why why don't we just wrap it up during the the testimony? Well, why are we? Why are we allowing something to to not be part of the application where the public and and the and the board members can't review that that information?
So it's it's essentially just structural calculations that go with the retaining wall. So everything regarding the retaining wall height, material, that's all shown on the site plans. This is usually a supplemental document that shows the geo grid and all the structural.
Right, but that let let me ask you.
Mr. Chair, it's it's up to the board. What what Jordan is saying is from his perspective as a board engineer that a condition is acceptable, but it, you know, if the board feels that it's something they want to see, it's absolutely something they can see. So it's up to it's up to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a reason for my question. So I'm not a structural engineer expert, but I know a little bit about retaining walls. And and it's my understanding that the geo grid it may may extend into a buffer or it has to go out a certain length based upon its engineered engineering requirement. So without seeing where that geo grid is disturbing the land, how can we as the board members know everything about what's getting disturbed? There may be additional trees now that need to be planted. Who knows what this may end up may end up coming to? Am I wrong in in that?
That's that's certainly a fair point, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. And if that's required, that's that's what we'll need to do. And I would just ask that, I mean, it's in particular locations where it is a concern that we're impacting the buffer.
No, you you if you're going to put a retaining wall up, you're going to disturb the land. We we should have a right to understand where you're disturbing our land.
So I think what he's saying is that we're going to want to see what this what the impacts of this is going to be in a revised submission prior to the board acting on any relief from the buffer.
And and yes, we're everywhere, Miss V. I mean, I don't know how much this geo geo technical fabric may may end up disturbing the land around it.
I mean, just typically, the geo textile fabric goes back about the height of the wall, just as a rule of thumb.
And provide the provide the engineering calculations and the details for us to review.
Okay, yeah. And the only reason I bring that up is I look at, there's a lot of walls in here that aren't impacting buffers would not reasonably impact the buffer. And I can see areas where you're particularly concerned about it, you know, particularly up front and maybe in in the space down here. And if there were particular areas that we wanted to identify, that would kind of define the scope for us a little bit better. And and rather than go through and design everything now at this stage, when, you know, we're we're still in the review process. I mean, honestly, I've never I I've never provided engineering calculations for a wall design during the permitting, the the planning board phase. And and I understand your question. And I think it's reasonable, and I'm not trying to say it's not. I'm just trying to kind of isolate it down to addressing your your concern.
If you haven't designed the walls at this particular time, then how do you know the walls even work? I'm not an expert in in retaining walls. I'm looking at this from a layman's standpoint. And and if I had the engineering knowledge that you do about retaining walls, I could I could possibly agree with you, but I don't. You haven't provided me any information to be able to feel comfortable that there isn't going to be further disturbance that we need to review and that the public needs to review in regards to any retaining walls.
Okay. All right, moving down the list. There was a comment in the CME review letter that we modify the plans to comply with the requirement that no stormwater spill over the retaining wall, which we would agree to comply with that requirement. Just to touch on utilities, the project is proposing to utilize the sewer and water services from municipality. There's an eight inch water line proposed around the building and and it ties into the existing main in Route nine. There is also sanitary sewer that's proposed on the site. The sanitary sewer is proposed to a proposed pump station on the property that then will pump and discharge to an existing manhole located on the adjacent commercial. Included with the plant submission was a full lighting design. It's included decorative LED lights, light fixtures on the property. The lights are designed such that they're fully downward projecting. They're not outward projecting, so we're not directing light horizontally. This is going to minimize the glare on due to one properties of motorists. It was raised in the CME review letter that there were certain design waivers associated with the lighting that we had on the plans as far as lighting levels in particular areas not being a requirement. But we've agreed to modify those plans to comply with those conditions. Additionally, it was noted that or there was a question raised whether there was any lighting within the courtyard areas and is our intention to provide lighting in courtyard areas? We honestly didn't, we didn't include it just because we were more concerned about the parking and drive aisles, but we certainly provide courtyard lighting and and sidewalk lighting as part of an updated submission for professionals review. So that really covers my site engineering testimony. Have to answer any questions? I can touch back on anything that that I may have missed, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you.
I think you covered it all.
Okay.
Mr. Keenan, are you providing any any wall signs?
Signs on the building?
Correct.
No.
Just the monument signs. And Jen, do you know if he covered all of the waivers on your list?
Um, I am going through them right now. I think he.
My best.
I think he did. I mean, I know you didn't really acknowledge my review letter, but like, that's okay.
Sorry. I think they kind of went together, so I kind of melded the two. I apologize.
I think I have a few. Parking lots exposed to the public view should be surrounded by a minimum of three foot high year round. This will be visually imperious screen has your wall. Did you touch on that?
I I didn't, but I'll defer to the landscape architect. I believe we're going to comply with that, but I'll let him address that.
And then true replacement, I'm guessing you'll defer that for right now?
Correct.
Uh driveway width succeeding twenty-four feet?
Yes, and I I we're proposing the twenty-five feet. And I guess I'm a little, I get, I'm not sure with its contradiction. There's the thirty foot standard and there's a twenty-four foot standard. We, you know, we're comfortable with the twenty-five. It gives it just a look of that extra foot gives a little bit more space for people getting in and out of the site and the the fire trucks. So we'd like to keep it at twenty-five.
Understood. So the board knows we do have a requirement to provide a thirty foot aisle, and there's also a requirement that driveway width succeeding twenty-four feet should be approved by the planning board. They provide a twenty-five foot drive aisle, sorry, twenty-five foot driveway along Route nine and then thirty foot wide from West Farms Road.
And why why do we, why do we require relief for a wider driveway?
It's driveways in in excess of twenty-four feet wide. That's that's.
Is it just because it's more pavement? It sounds, sounds like a silly requirement to me. Doesn't sound counterintuitive. Sounds like a wider driveway would be a safer driveway. Am I wrong in that thinking?
I guess it limits you from from having an infinite wide driveway, it restricts you to a certain width. And then beyond that, you need to see from the planning board.
From your professional opinion, do you see any any downside to having the wider driveway? Sounds to me, from a layman's standpoint, it sounds like it's a positive.
Yeah, certainly. At at twenty-five to thirty feet, that would fit this here. You know, if we're talking forty feet, I think that would be excessive. I think this tries to put a number on what a what a fair sized driveway would be.
I mean, ultimately, if if the board's comfortable with the twenty-four feet and fire professionals comfortable, fire chief is comfortable with twenty-four feet, we'd be happy to go down to twenty-four feet and compliance with that standard and.
At least for me personally, Mr. Rizzo has has addressed my concern and that thirty feet would be better driveway. I'm I'm in agreement. Mr. Husser, this I've got some comments here from the Environmental Commission. Is this is this the professional that needs to to address these?
I don't know if it's going to be Dennis as the engineer, Mr. Wolfson, regarding any environmental issues.
Yeah, I I can do my best to answer any environmental issues.
We we had some comments from from two environmental commissions that we we've had in in twenty twenty-two. Was a phase one or a preliminary assessment report done for this product project?
That I can't, I I can't say.
And if so, you know, we requested a copy of that. The reason and the rationale for our question is we we reviewed, I believe it was the NRI that was submitted. I'm not sure if French did that or if it was another firm, but they brought up the the site history. And we we did a review of the aerials historically on the on the project and had some concerns with the previous structures that were there. I believe the conclusion was it was used for horse stabling or some type of agricultural. But what we saw from the commission was other structures that that raised some concerns as to what historically was on this property.
We do, we do have a phase one and we'll be happy to share it with you.
Okay, thank you. And based upon the phase one, was a phase two recommended?
I don't know that.
Uh, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I think you also had a Woodlands Management comment too?
Yeah, I think we asked, we asked for the latest Woodlands Management. We weren't provided with that as well.
Ms. Harry, it sounds like you want to chime in on that one.
They they did submit a Woodlands Management.
I don't think you've ever seen it.
Okay, thank you.
I'm I'm sorry, I have two more quick questions, Mr. Keenan. Can you just give a quick summary of outside agency approvals where you've applied so far and where you stand?
We've applied to the county, we've applied to the Soil Conservation District, and we have applied to the NJD.
Okay, and will you be applying to the DOT as well?
Oh, I'm sorry. We applied to DOT as well.
Okay. And then do you agree to comply with all the technical comments in the back portion of our letter?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm all set.
Thank you. No one else has any questions, Counselor, your next witness, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Does anybody need to take a break? Are we good to go? Seeing none, please, please carry on, Mr. Wilson.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Thomas Carmen, who'll discuss landscaping and lighting plans for the project.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Sure, my name is Thomas S. Carmen, C A R M A N. And I am.
Mr. Wilson, you can go ahead and qualify him.
Thank you, Mr. Cuciaro. Yes, could you share with us your educational professional experience, including any licensures?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So I am principal with the firm Malilo Bauer Carmen. We are located at two hundred Union Ave, Brielle, New Jersey. I am a licensed landscape architect in the state of New Jersey since nineteen ninety-seven. Prior to that, I received my degree in landscape architecture from Rutgers University. I have appeared before numerous boards in New Jersey on similar applications such as in Monroe, Manalupin, Cranbury, West Windsor, Florham Park. I have not had the pleasure of appearing before this board, but I'm happy to be here this evening.
Thank you. Your credentials.
Thank you very much. Tom, do you want to lead us through the landscaping plans for the project?
I'd love to, sure. So this evening I'll provide you with an overview of the the landscape improvements as well as the exterior recreational components. So if I could, I will share my screen. And what I've pulled up here is the overall landscape plan with a date on it of six thirteen, two thousand and twenty-two. So we can mark this as exhibit.
It's already been marked.
Already, it's already marked. That's a A nineteen.
A nineteen, great. So this exhibit on the 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 top of the sheet, we see West Farms Road. North is pointing upwards slightly to the right, and then we have Route nine off to the to the lower left. You just heard about the overall circulation of the site and how everything lays out. So we have a richly detailed landscape plan, which includes a diverse palette of both ornamental as well as native plant material along the parking lots, the the buffers, the building foundations, as well as those amenity spaces. There's over forty-five different varieties of plant material. There's over forty five different, uh, varieties of plant material that we have used to create this diversity. Uh, deciduous trees such as, um, maple, oak, honey locusts and plane trees are among some of them that we are proposing. And then what we also do is we provide some ornamental trees such as dogwood, cherry, uh, red bud, birch, to really kind of accent some of the areas and provide some seasonal interest. The overall building itself, um, the, uh, the foundation of the building is planted with a mix of deciduous and, and evergreen shrubs. And then what we do is we layer in some perennials and ornamental grasses to, uh, to complement the, uh, the architecture itself and to create some seasonal interest. The, uh, the stormwater basins that were just discussed, um, as along the entry drive. Um, those are, those are planted with a, uh, two different types of seed mixes. So we have a, a bottom basin seed mix that's located just there at the bottom. And then some of the side slopes, we use a different, uh, seed mix. Both of them, um, incorporate all native, uh, uh, seeds. And then what we've done is we've proposed some native shrubs as well as, uh, native, uh, perennials such as milkweed uh, that we incorporate into those basins as well. Just based on the, uh, the conversation, the testimony with civil engineer and, and hearing the board, um, we will take a look at, uh, the hostile vegetation that was, uh, discussed and incorporate that into, uh, into an updated landscape plan. So all the plant material that we're proposing for the site, um, based on sun and shade locations and all of it is, uh, is hardy for the, uh, for the application. I did have the pleasure of, uh, walking the site this past Monday, uh, with Ms. Spiro. And, um, we, we walked, uh, we started our walk, uh, off of Route nine and made our way all throughout the site up to West Farms Road and then, um, back down towards, uh, towards Route nine. As we walked the site, we discussed, uh, many different items. And we're, um, we're happy to, uh, to incorporate, um, the, the various items that were either considered to be lacking in the current plans or just various items to, uh, to better supplement and, uh, and create a, a stronger landscape. So just to, to kind of highlight the, uh, the five items, main items that were discussed is, uh, along West Farms Road and Route nine. The, uh, we will be adding street trees along there. Um, when we add those street trees, we will do that in coordination with the, uh, the sidewalks. That was just indicated that those will be added as well. And along Route nine, there is some, uh, within the right of way itself, there is some existing invasive, uh, plant material such as some pears and different things like that, that would be removed, uh, to create a, uh, a better, healthier landscape. Additionally, uh, related to the buffers, so the, uh, the fifty foot buffer along the east here, um, where the, the single family residential homes are. Um, we, we are maintaining that dimension. And as you can see, we are, uh, supplementing that with approximately fifty evergreens as shown. But, um, as we walked out there, we saw that there's certainly some opportunities to do more. Um, so we will be supplementing that with some additional evergreens and, uh, and maybe some additional, uh, some flowering deciduous trees as well. Now, um, the, the buffer requirement, um, there, there are really a couple of items that have to be, um, addressed in order to fully comply with it. And one of them is creating a berm within the fifty foot buffer and then planting that. While we were out there, we did indicate or, or notice both, uh, Ms. Spiro and myself that there is a lot of, of good existing vegetation out there. And it would be a shame to remove all that vegetation to, um, create a berm. So what we're proposing is to maintain that existing vegetation and then supplement it with, uh, with the additional, uh, plant material. So because of that, because we're maintaining that, I, I believe we would still be seeking a waiver or variance for the, uh, within the buffer. Now, as the buffer rolls around and we're at West Farms Road, um, similar situation in that there, there is, well, one, we will be adding the street trees. But then, um, there are some, a, a stand of some good plant material over there that again, it would be a shame to remove all that plant material, um, from essentially the curb to the new parking area and then create a berm and plant that. So what we're suggesting here, uh, and I believe Ms. Spiro was, was in agreement with this was that we, we keep the existing vegetation to the greatest extent possible. Um, and then we supplement that. We, we plant that with some, um, additional plant material, both evergreen as well as some deciduous material. So when we do that, we also, um, one of the items that we did not show was, um, the three foot shrub, uh, requirement along parking areas. So we will also be layering that within this buffer area. And the reason that we didn't do that was, was purely because we thought that that requirement had to do with, um, screening headlights for cars parking, um, at a parking area. Now, the nature of the way the, the site is laid out, all of the cars park towards the building, so the lights are really not shining, um, into the buffer. But we're, we're certainly happy to add that, and that'll just, uh, additionally strengthen that buffer by providing that three foot, uh, shrub planting. The, uh, the other item that we spoke about was, and, uh, just testified to or touched on by, by civil was, uh, related to the, the planting around the trash enclosure. Now, as you can see here in this color version of the plan, it's clear that, um, there is a hardscape around the, uh, trash enclosure. But what we will do is, um, between the building and the, uh, the sidewalk, we will supplement that existing or the, the, the current landscape that we're proposing there and, uh, provide some, some taller plant material. We will also certainly do the same thing as mentioned in the fifty foot buffer. We're going to be supplementing that already, but we'll pay, uh, you know, specific, uh, attention to the area right across from the, uh, the trash enclosure. The, um, one of the other items that we, we discussed while we were out there, um, although not really a, a buffer requirement related to adjacent to the, to the commercial property, but was just the, uh, that we will be looking to, to supplement that a bit as well. Um, more so just for, for our own residents, um, over here, um, looking off site. So all of this plant material that we're speaking about, um, adding in, we will be doing that. And then what we will have to do is revisit the, uh, the woodland management plan and just update that accordingly. Because, um, as indicated, uh, some substantial amount of plant material will be, uh, added to this, um, to, to better improve some of these buffer spaces. Now, what I'd like to do is just, um, touch on the, uh, the amenity spaces. So, uh, you, you heard from the first witness related to the, uh, to the high level of, um, of amenities within the building and, uh, as well as outside of the building. We have, um, our office has had the pleasure of working on a number of, uh, of communities with Woodmont properties. And, uh, yes, they always provide high level, uh, residential amenities. And, uh, and here they are doing so in three different courtyards. The one being the memory care courtyard, which is, um, fully enclosed by the building. And it includes, uh, two different patio spaces that are linked up by meandering walkway that makes its way through some lush planting, creating a, a, a good garden, uh, type environment. And then, uh, including a, a water feature at the one. Both of these, uh, spaces are located off of interior amenity space as well as corridor. Then, uh, towards the upper right, you see the assisted living courtyard. And this one, um, also includes patio space with, uh, with some lounge seating that includes a fire pit, uh, barbecue grilling, uh, area with a shade structure, uh, table and chair seating, uh, as well as some patios for those residential units that, um, front on this space itself. So they would have their own, um, kind of patio space. Lastly, the, uh, the independent living courtyard includes the same kind of private terrace spaces for, uh, the residential units that look out on this space. But then, uh, common courtyard area that includes, uh, barbecue grill encounters again, uh, lounge seating areas with fire pit. Um, all of the fire pit barbecue grills all include, you know, code compliant emergency shut offs. Um, shade structure proposed in here as well as, um, within this specific courtyard. There's a movie wall as well as some garden plots and then a, uh, a putting green itself. So all three, uh, courtyards really include some, uh, some, some great amenities to, to provide a very social environment for the residents. We have, uh, reviewed the, the, the comments within the, uh, the CME comment letter, um, from three thirty one specifically related to landscape. There were, there were nine comments within there. And, uh, and all of them were, were happy to accommodate and, uh, and work with, uh, professionals with both, um, planning as well as, uh, engineering professionals. So that provides an overview of, uh, of the landscape improvements as well as the exterior amenities. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Carmen. Could you please scroll over to the proposed commercial area? Future commercial area. Do you, um, what is the plan there? Are we, are we going to clear cut that area or wait until you have a commercial tenant?
My understanding is that, and, and I will have, um, civil engineer chime in if, if I'm stating anything, um, incorrectly. But certainly the, uh, the detention basins will be, uh, constructed. And then, um, the, the area for the, the future commercial itself, I believe that there will be some, some general grading that, um, occurs within that area in order to facilitate the construction of those basins. So really that area will be, um, uh, vegetation would be removed from there as well, is my understanding.
So this is, this is to the professionals. My concern is we now have a couple of, of commercial properties where the developers have clear cut their, their land. And, and in my opinion, they've been there for quite a bit of time. Um, is that something that, is that something that the board should be concerned about? Or is that even something that the board hasn't has jurisdiction to make comment on?
So let me just ask a couple of questions. Anyone who wants to can, can answer. Uh, as proposed, does the applicant require any relief from the tree replacement ordinance? Or are they replanting completely on site?
We are seeking relief related to that.
Okay, so I guess, Mr. Chairman, I think you probably have jurisdiction based upon the fact that, you know, whether the clearing in that area is, is necessary or not at this time because they do need relief from the tree replacement, uh, ordinance. So questions about, you know, whether it actually needs to be cleared right now or whether that would be part of some more appropriate as part of some future application, you know, whatever those answers are. But I, I, I think it's a legitimate road for you to go down and explore.
So, so me having a concern that I don't want yet to see another, another development that's clear cut waiting for a commercial development or commercial, uh, redevelopment to take place until they actually have it is, is, is within my.
In the context of the fact that they need relief from the tree replacement ordinance, I think it is, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Well, Mr. Wilson, we may need some further testimony as to whether there's an engineering reason why it needs to be cleared now. Um, and why may not, and, and why can't wait until you actually have a commercial tenant to put in its place.
I've added that to my list, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
If there are no, no more questions, I'd call Mark Kuberski.
I, I have, I have one question to second up, Mr. Chair. It is typically Woodmont, uh, and I don't, I think it's a question I could ask. These commercial pad sites, are they directly tied in with the senior living facility? Or is it going to be a completely separate entity business?
I don't know that that's been even considered at this point.
Okay. And my second question.
I'll circle back to them and I, I suspect we'll be back at, at a future date, so.
It'll, it'll be a complete separate business.
Okay, thank you. And, um, a question for, for Tom and Sherry as well. And it's certainly more of a traffic engineering question, but I think you guys could both chime in. With the existing, um, landscaping on West Farms Road and knowing that portion of West Farms Road quite well, is there with the existing landscaping and then the addition of the plantings, does that cause any alert for line of sight of cars on the ingress and egress onto West Farms or coming into the facility from West Farms? Because I know this map is, is kind of hard to, to gauge the size of the plantings, but knowing that the existing wood line there and the speed of the cars that go down West Farms, it, it looks to me on this map that there could be line of sight issues, both exiting and entering this place.
We're going to have a traffic expert who can probably speak to the site lines and, and that question.
Would it make, would it make sense, would it make sense, Mr. Husser, for them to also, oh, uh, get, uh, something from the local police department? I think they have, don't they have an ability, Mr. Kuchero, did, am I, am I remembering that right? They have a division that could, could, uh, take a look at this and see if they have any concerns?
They, they do have some officers that have some training. They have weighed in, you know, when they have felt appropriate in the past. I don't want to say that we should require it, but if you want to recommend that, uh, you know, they take a look at it, we certainly can. We can't make them do anything, but, you know, to the extent that you think they may have something, you know, that's, that is helps the board in its deliberative process, we can certainly ask.
With Mr. Husser's question, I'll leave it up to him.
The traffic safety department does get copied on all the links for all the applications for both boards. Sometimes they comment, sometimes they don't.
Okay, so we just asked, maybe asked the applicant to just reach out to the traffic safety officer and just, uh, find out if they have any opinion. Please.
We can certainly do that. And, and Mr. Husser, the, the, the graphic that I have here, you see this like triangular shape on here. That is the site triangle for, um, this, this roadway. So it, it's on there. Um, we certainly will, as we're, you know, enhancing this buffer. And the one thing that this isn't showing right now is once the sidewalk goes in, right? That will actually open up that frontage a little bit further. And, um, so I think that's going to help. But we can, we can certainly look into that further and, and make sure that, um, we get this plan in front of the, uh, the correct township entity to take a look.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Doesn't seem like it.
Okay.
Twenty four minutes left, Mr. Wilson.
Okay. Mark Kuberski of Mayor, the project architect.
Yes. Can you see on the screen? Yep, I see. Okay. Uh, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
It's Mark Kuberski, K U B E R S K I.
Okay, uh, go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Kuchiera. Mark, could you share with us your educational and professional experience?
Yes, I can. I am a graduate of Drexel University with a bachelor's in architecture.
Yes, I can. I am a graduate of Drexel University with a bachelor's in architecture. And I am currently licensed in New Jersey with a good standing. I also, I'm employed at Meyer Design, which is in Armory, Pennsylvania. And I have testified at numerous towns all across New Jersey, the latest ones being West Orange, Marlboro, Oat Pan and Scotch Plains.
Chairman, we'd ask he be accepted as an expert in the area of architecture.
We'll accept your credentials. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark, do you want to lead us through the design of the building?
I sure can, and I can share my screen. That's okay. And what is the, before you get into the design, can you answer what it what is the gonna be the building classification of this building? Is it going to be residential R or is it or is it considered a I for institution? Okay, so what what we have here is New Jersey forces us to classify assisted living memory care. As I two condition one, there's there's no, we can't, we can't classify anything else. It it's just part of what New Jersey modified the code to force us to put that into that use group. Which is, which for the for the remainder of the board is considered a commercial building and not a residential building. For that building classification, is that fair statement? Was that question?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. Chairman, what was what was your question?
I'm sorry, so so with it being classified as. Is that that mean that it is not a residential building, it is a commercial building?
You're talking about the. The main building, not the pad sites?
Yeah, this is going, no, this is going back to the original question with the engineer who couldn't answer that question. He made a statement that this was a residential. That this was a residential application, there was a residential development. And the 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 architect just was the was just confirmed that it. It's not a residential building.
Well, I I think though we need to look at this from a couple perspectives. The construction code has its own identification of uses. The construction codes don't always match up with the zoning ordinance, the RSIS. And things like that, they're, you know, they're made for, you know, when sprinklers are required and, you know. Where you have ingress and egress, it's not dispositive on on the issue. So whatever it's classified as under the construction code, not dispositive as to. Our zoning ordinance, I I would defer to Jen, you know, from a zoning perspective. I mean, people will be living there, it will be their home, but the the construction code is not dispositive.
So let's let's get that clarified then, so. Miss Bean, just just give me one second, just give me. I'm sure you can fill in the blank. I guess what I'm trying to get at is there's been comments about the RSIS standards and meeting the RSIS standards. Is it fair for me to say that the RSI standards are truly for residential properties?
Yes, they only apply to the to residential properties.
So where does the RSIS in some way, shape, form, or any other code in New Jersey classify? This type of construction as a residential.
I think that the closest.
So that the so that the RSIS standards could even be discussed.
I think the closest that the RSIS gets is that it does classify assisted living. As a residential structure, it doesn't necessarily identify this use specifically. But I can tell you there was an evolution at one point in time, the RSIS didn't even directly address assisted living. And then there were some issues, there was a comment, and it it took, you know, life from there. So the RSIS doesn't necessarily keep up with all the variations and and evolutions of. You know, age restricted development, but certainly it goes to assisted living.
And I can appreciate that for the assisted living part, but in memory care, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Kuberski. Memory care requires skilled nursing. That's not correct, no.
That's that's not correct.
Not is is there going to be skilled nursing in this facility? No. Okay. Memory care is still is still classified as assisted living.
And certainly the independent living is residential.
Yes, independent living is a residential. So there'll be no skilled nursing on this site. No.
None whatsoever. Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, probably for Ron. Does this project add any credits to our fair share obligation?
Oh, I would leave it to the applicant to answer, but they are providing seven credits. Towards the township's obligation, because there are seven beds that are required to be reserved for Medicaid. But in terms of whether it would trigger anything beyond what they're they are providing on site. I'd leave that to to the applicant and to Jen.
This is not, just to clarify, this is not an end of life facility.
I could speak to that. This is not an end of life facility, no, there there will be circumstances where residents. Can and should be discharged to a skilled nursing facility or a hospital.
Okay, thank you.
And every assisted living community in the state of New Jersey should be the same.
If I I I. I may need some more testimony as to how you're having a memory care facility without skilled nursing, but I don't think it may be applicable right now, so we'll just.
Just to really quickly answer that, the the Department of Health guidelines. Clearly state that memory care is part of assisted living, memory care is not a skilled nursing service. Skilled nursing is the is an acuity level, whereas memory care is an ailment. So there's two different distinctions.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, appreciate it.
Welcome.
Please carry on. Okay. If I can share my screen, I can walk through the the building. Can everybody see this? And everybody seeing the screen?
Yes, your chair.
You can see it or no? Yes, go ahead, somebody asked. So. Go ahead, Mr. Stephen.
If if I could, I would like to recuse myself from this application. I have. A little bit of a emotional thing that I I cannot judge this fairly, I can't.
Okay, Mr. Cacero.
Well, certainly. I mean, if an if a if a board member doesn't feel they can properly. You know, discharge their duties, you know, they should recuse, I think, Mr. Wolfson and I, you know, will discuss, you know. It's some other time, you know, the the impact, but if you're gonna recuse, and I I just recommend that you you log off.
Happy to do so.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, this is the the first floor plan sheet A one dot zero one. And I can start from the beginning here from the entrance, this is the port to share drop off where the residents will enter the facility. This portion of the building on this side is all assisted living. In the middle here, as you come in, you will have a coffee breakfast area on this side, and on this side will be a pub area. And on the back end here is administration behind back of house. In the middle is a tech center for residents to use. Straight in front and center is reception. And mail right here, and this location here is elevators for the residents. In the middle here is the kitchen which supplies food to a numerous, as says. Mr. Nichols has mentioned numerous dining venues in the facility. On this side of the building is the assisted living dining. And now, and this is the courtyard, which was described by a landscape architect. This is the connector points to the outdoor amenities, and this is a greenhouse for the residents to use. And down in the lower corner, this is where deliveries come in, this is the gray areas are all back of house, MVP, commercial laundry. And the back back area, and there's some additional assisted living units in this lower quadrant of the the building. Once you come down through here, this is the entire memory care wing at the facility. This is a one story facility with an inner courtyard. And you're entering through here, and this this area of the building is is secure, residents cannot wander out of this area of the building. The exit doors have a delay egress component associated with them. The main living, the main common area is located up front here with dining and and living areas. And activity spaces all in this main main area with a demonstration kitchen area. And then again, kitchen supplies food right from here into this this area of the building. Down a lower quadrant is also some additional common space with a salon and sunroom. And again, the residents have their own secured courtyard in the middle for them to be to enjoy the outdoor space. This quadrant of the building is all independent living. And as you come through here, this is one of the dining venues, it's a formal dining, and this portion here is more of an informal dining. With an automatic feature for residents to grab, it's more of a grab and go kind of feature for food. Again, we have a number of demonstration kitchens for residents to experience live food preparation right in front of them. This portion of the building is the the pool, which will have a hot tub and and pool area. And this will have a retractable wall which can be opened to the patio and outdoor courtyard. And this portion up here is a is a golf simulator space. And then back into here is all independent living units. That's the first floor, going up to the second floor is. We have a central portion of fitness and pub and theater. In this portion of the building, again, this portion over here is all assisted living, this is vitality with. It's more like a wellness suite for the residents. This portion opens up to an outdoor patio on the roof overlooking this one story portion of the building. And then these are all independent living units all through here. Next floor is third floor, again, this is A one point zero three. The main portion, the building main core is the performing arts and rooftop dining, again, with an outdoor patio. Activities and theater for AL on this side. A small lounge, and then we have a salon barber shop at this quadrant for independent living. Again, AL IL units on this side and assisted living all on this side. These are the exterior elevations, A two point zero zero. This is the main front elevation, facing the main road, the porkishare. The style of architecture is more of a modern style farmhouse, which is what we're going for, is a lot of horse farms in the area. So we're trying to pick up some of the architectural style in the area, we also seen a lot of farmhouse style houses in the area. So we're trying to pick up some of the architectural features from the local residential areas. The exterior materials are going to be mainly elastone and hardy board, which is cementitious siding. It's gonna be born that with some horizontal siding. And we also have some areas of stainless steel metal roofing, and the main roof will be a asphalt shingle. Trim will be more of a composite trim and and residential windows, which will have a a black frame around. This is the main front view, this is all independent living, showing all the patios, this is assisted living. All the residents, all the assisted living and the independent living have their own patios, memory care does not have a patio. This is the the view from the the assisted living side of the building. This is the assisted living courtyard with the greenhouse, again, the side view of the building, we're carrying the materials around the building. Again, with the stone horizontal siding and battening siding, it's all hardy boards, cementitious siding, very durable. And this is the one story memory care wing in the back. This is a view from the back of the building, again, this is the one story memory care. And the other building in the in the background, again, this is independent living, this is assisted living. And materials carry their way around the building. And then this is the independent living side of the building. Again, the porches, same materials carry around the building. We meet the the building height, the the highest point of the building to the average. Me me the highest roof is forty four feet and five inches. And and this is a rendering of our building from the street.
That's eight twenty.
I can open, that's about it for my presentation, I can. Either stop sharing or answer questions. What what is the what is the proposed HVAC scheme for the project? Could you go back to your elevation? Are you are you have, you have any any lubers or anything else like that that are gonna be associated with it? Yes, we will have, what we are doing is in this, in these areas of the building. We will have HVAC to causes and there'll be a there'll be a vent, but you won't know what's there, because it's gonna be part of the. The patio area, so there'll be a small louver, but it'll be associated with the patio, so it won't be just out in the middle of the wall. Have you depicted that in your in your your elevation? In the elevation, I don't know, I think here. Yes, you can kind of see it here. It doesn't bump out on the bill, it bumps out a little bit, but it's it's mainly associated with the patio. Is there any, is there any proposed green? Infrastructure of some sort or green design into the, you know, our, we have an ordinance that encourages green design. Is there any green design gonna be associated with the with the building? You sound like a lead, a lead project? No, no, it's green design, you know, you we all we all know what that coined phrase means, you know. Could be solar panels, it could be rain guards, it could be materials, you know, you know, locally sourced or recycled materials. What 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 elements of green or could you put on the record that you are proposing for the? Project. We didn't really necessarily, we don't have really a list of what were, what would be considered green at the moment. And we are talking about, thinking about putting some green roofs on the building in some areas for the residents around. Around the patio areas, we don't necessarily have those all flushed out yet.
But Mark, from a from an operational perspective, most of the materials that we'll be using will be green materials, recycled materials. And we will be, we'll have a whole green program from an operations perspective.
Wherever we can feasibly, yes, we will use something that's. That's something documented, that'd be great to have for the record.
On my list, sir.
What about the amenity space? So how are you planning on dealing with the HVAC in the many space? I get guess the purpose of my question of asking these these type of questions is to make sure that. Areas where you may require larger HVAC units to support them, they're going to be properly screened. And if they are, we'd like to see those in the elevations and the sections to prove that they're gonna be appropriately screened and so forth, where they'll be located. That's really the genesis of the of the question. Right, what we do is for the the residents will have all their own units, and that that won't, there won't be anything. Outside of the unit in the residents. No condensing? Yes, we'll have some some common HVAC, but those will be located on the main roof. But with the design of our building, this roof has a low flat area in the behind it. So any equipment will be located on the upper high roof, and it will not be visible at all from the street. And and any noise won't leave the the surface of the roof. Do you have any sections or or floor plans that can show those? I I can certainly provide those, I don't have those available at the moment. Okay, thank you. And is the units for the apartments, are they all self contained, or is there an independent condensing unit that's gotta go on the ground? They're they're self contained. So there'll be no, there'll be no ground mounted HVAC equipment of any sort? No, we will not have anything on the ground at all. Okay, where 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 in the building will the kitchen hoods and so forth be located? Kitchen hoods will be in this main, again, in the main portion of the building, and these will go straight up and exhaust to the roof. And where are they in relationship to the residential that you're near? That they're gonna be, as far as the building goes, they they will be coming out at the top here, at the the rooftop. Going straight through, we're gonna chase them through to the roof, you wouldn't even see them. Okay, thank you.
Are there elevators in the building or just?
Are there elevators in the building or just stairs? Yes, we have elevators located, we have two elevators located right here and they will be, they will be stretcher, um, sized. And we also have an elevator down in this location as well.
Got it. Is there any facade lighting or anything like that that hasn't been properly shown on the, uh, the site plans?
Repeat that question?
Is there any, is there any facade lighting or anything that may not be on the, the site? Site, site lighting plans that's part of the architectural package?
Yeah, we will have some, some lighting associated with the, um, egress components. Some residential style lighting, it's not in, we generally have it directed downward, not necessarily out towards the neighborhood.
So is, so in your elevations, I didn't notice any, in your elevations, I didn't notice any wall mounted lighting. Does that mean that there will be no wall mounted lighting or do the elevations need to be, be updated to include that?
Um, yeah, we probably don't, we might not at this moment have the exterior lighting shown on the exterior, but we can certainly show that.
Is there any signage of any sort that, that, that's going to be on the facade of the building?
No signage.
This building going to have a generator?
You'll have a generator, yes.
Do you know where the generator will be located in relationship to the residents that are, are, are behind you?
I think the civil engineer may have it located on his plans. I don't know if I have it, it might not be represented online, I, I don't have it, with the architectural, I don't have it. But the civil engineer might have it shown on his plans. I think it's located in this receiving area.
It is shown on the, uh, the civil plans.
Yes, you're correct, Mark.
Those will go back to our, our professionals. Um, is there any, is there any noise ordinances or anything that, uh, may require the applicant to provide a, a, a study to indicate what the noise level may be at the property lines?
We have, uh, noise ordinance requirements, the state has noise ordinance requirements, they're not zoning requirements, so the applicant has no choice, they have to comply. Um, there's no, it's not anything we can grant relief from.
Okay, yes, we will have sound attenuation and, you know, the generator will have additional stuff loaded to make sure it meets the ordinance from the, um, property lines.
Thank you. Does anybody else from the board have any further questions? I think none. Counselor?
Let's, uh, I'd be happy to bring, uh, our traffic engineer up if the board would indulge.
I would say we're at ten o'clock, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to call it a night.
Same.
Otherwise, otherwise we're proud of how, uh, we came in on time.
And Mr. Wolfson, to be honest with you, I, I would, I would really like to see, get some testimony on the opinion from our, our police department's traffic safety officer, which, you know, could, your traffic, your traffic engineer probably would need to know that information, it may enhance or, or change his testimony.
Okay, you'd like us to reach out or are you going to have the board reach out?
Yes, please.
I, I think, Mr. Chairman, we could both do it, the applicant can reach out and we can send something over to the police department, asking if they have an interest in commenting as well.
Thank you.
And then, um, Eileen, I don't know, you know, what the next several meetings, uh, look like, what, what looks like a good night to, uh, to resume.
July 21st, there's three applications scheduled, August 4th, there's two. August 18th, there's Mr. Pape's application that we just carried tonight. And after that, I have nothing.
Um, and Mr. Wolfson, I, I don't, I don't know that there's any revised plans that are necessary. How long do you think the applicant needs to get together whatever information and anything else that's required? Uh, we don't, we don't necessarily want to push you.
I don't think that that's correct. There's, there's lots of things that need to update, there's, there's issues with the, uh, the buffer and the, in the built, in the part of the site around West Farms Road, that they're going to look at different grading options to eliminate that or retaining wall issues. There's, uh, uh, the geo, geo fencing that they, they said they would do the engineering of retaining walls to be able to look at, see how that further disturbs the, uh, the ground around it. The the, the tree clearing for the commercial site.
No, no, certainly they're going to look at all that, Mr. Chair, I don't know that they're going to change the plans at all. That's, that'll be up to them.
Oh, fair enough, fair, fair enough, thank you, I'm sorry, misunderstood the question.
So how long, uh, Mr. Wolfson, do you think the applicant requires?
I, I would think we could get my list together in a couple of weeks.
Okay, we need a little time for the, uh, professionals to, to look at it. So Eileen, I think one of the August dates would work.
Is that August 4th?
August 4th has a minor subdivision and Mammoth Commerce.
Well, Mammoth Commerce has, we've tried to schedule them a million times, they've created their own issue with, uh, you know, asking to be adjourned. Mr. Chair, I, I would think that, um, we could bring the applicant back that night. And, you know, Mammoth Commerce, we can hear after the completion of the other two applications.
Okay.
So, uh, what is that again, Eileen, August 4th?
August 4th.
Does that work, Mr. Wolfson?
Um, is my traffic expert on and can confirm availability?
Who is your traffic expert?
Uh, Schropshire. Nathan Mosley.
I, I haven't seen Nathan. He's not even on the call that I know.
If it was not Nathan, it was Mr. Feranda tonight, he was subbing for Mr. Fer, for Nathan.
Oh, hold on, he's here, hold on, let me bring him in.
Thanks, Eileen.
You're welcome. He should be on here.
Andrew?
There he is.
Hello, short answer is yes.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, if I can make the announcement.
Yes, please.
Okay, the application of Woodmont Senior Living LLC, case number SP1103, be carried to the board's August 4th, 2022 meeting. That will be a virtual meeting beginning at seven o'clock. Uh, the information on how to access the meeting will be available on the town's website at least 10 days prior. All application materials will also be available on the township's website as well as in the planning and zoning board office and available for inspection and review by members of the public and other interested parties. There'll be no further notice to property owners.
Thank you, Mr. Cucero, thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, board professionals, we appreciate it.
Yes.
Have a good night, thank you.
You too, sir.
Hey, Brian, or, or Ron, you may want to make a comment because there, there's a, a number of attendees here and some people keep raising their hands for comments. Um, I, I'm sure that, just a simple statement of how we go about that.
So the, this is a public hearing and once the applicant has finished its case, members of the public are going to have an opportunity to cross-examine witnesses and to provide their own testimony if they wish, but we have to finish the applicant's case. And what we need to have are the plans that are the final plans that the applicant is proposing so that you know what, and we know as a board what's being proposed. But you'll all have an opportunity at the next hearing, uh, to cross-examine based on the most up-to-date plans and to provide, uh, comments and, and testimony, just not, not tonight.
Thanks, Ron.
Thanks for clarification. Okay, uh, any master plan update? I don't, I think we lost.
No, I'm here.
Oh, you're there, oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, there's no master update for, uh-
You're off the page, sorry, Mr. White.
Taking a quick, a quick breather, I think the next item is, uh, farmland preservation.
Okay, and no reason to go into executive session?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you very much, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Bye.
Everyone have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you, good holiday, everybody.
Good night.